I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting for September 26th to order. First order of business is roll call.
Rizzato.
Here.
Etac, Stark, Chanzet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
Brown, O'Brien, Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
And McFadden.
All right, we have the necessary quorum to conduct business tonight. First thing, our next thing on the agenda is items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything? Okay. Third will be matters from the public for items not on the agenda. We've discussed it already. We will add some public comment time for somebody that has not commented yet, or anything that's new that you want to bring up when we get to the Campana project. But we're probably going to have our discussion first before we take any more public comment and try to get some of the things answered that we have questions on before we take the public comment. So nobody wants to talk about anything else tonight? Great. The next thing is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda tonight are the 2016 police pension municipal compliance report and the 2017 tax levy request. Item B, 2016 fire pension municipal compliance report and the 2017 tax levy request. Item C, the August financials. Item D, Resolution 17-105-R, accepting grant of easement from Batavia Park District for Area 3 storm sewer separation project at the Quarry Beach. Item E, Resolution 17-108-R, accepting a grant of easement from Suncast for the Suncast building expansion project. Item F, Resolution 17-109-R, authorizing reduction in the letter of credit for the Suncast building expansion project. Any questions? I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda and place it on file.
Second.
Uer and Salvati.
Well, you made the motion. I think he seconded.
Right. Which one of you?
I'll take Uer's second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is Resolution 17-106-R, authorizing execution of a contract with AL Lamp Construction for the Area 3 storm sewer separation in the amount of $165,981.20. Alderman, Callahan?
Yep. This is related to Area 3 storm water sewer separation between the sanitary and the waterline. The improvements include separating the storm sewer from the sanitary sewer at the downstream end of this area, which is the Fox River to the east end and to the West Side Cemetery. There were eight bids on this, and it was a very competitive process. There were seven that were actually under the engineer's estimate on this. So that was, that was great to see a lot of bids coming in on this. The lowest bid came in at AL Lamp Concrete Contractors in the amount of $150,892, and with a 10% contingency, the total award would be $165,981.20. Andrea, do you have anything to add?
You did a great job going over it. So yeah, this is the first phase of the Area 3 storm sewer separation. It is, the river outfall will go through the Batavia Park District area right along the bike path. That's what was on the consent agenda, so we have an easement through there. There was an existing easement before, and this will just accommodate the bigger storm sewer pipe through our storage yard back there and tie in through this existing storm sewer that's already in the cemetery. And then we're finalizing the plans right now. We'll be getting those shortly from WBK for the remainder of the Area 3 and looking at putting the next phase out to bid for a spring construction.
And this is, this is important because it addresses some of the things that we've been working on since the major June flooding in 2015.
2015.
It's one of the areas that needs addressing for flooding issues, and we're being...
Sanitary backups.
Right.
And as we continue to extend that storm sewer, we'll start connecting in street inlets and taking that out of the sanitary sewer. So this first phase will just put the downstream end, which is what we need to do to tie in upstream. So it'll be there once we get to those other locations.
And I think that's, this is just key to making sure that it's not just a flooding issue, it's the sanitary backups into people's homes, which is horrific, that needs to be solved. So thank you for bringing this.
Sure.
With that, does anybody have any else, any questions?
Does this include Blaine Street?
This area does include Blaine Street, but as I said, we have to phase this, so it will eventually make its way up there, yes.
Any other questions? I'll make a recommendation to City Council for approval of Resolution 17-106-R, authorizing execution of the contract with AL Lamp Concrete Contractors, Inc. of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the Area 3 storm water sewer separation outfall in amount not to exceed $165,981.20. And just real quick, Alderman and Malley has to be changed from vacant to...
We'll have...
...to City Council.
I'll have Janot updated.
Thank you.
All right, motion by Callahan, second by Meitzler. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That can go on for a second. Well, you know what? Let's talk about it during the meeting, so everybody knows that we're moving forward on that. All right, next up is Ordinance 17-59, amendment to the zoning map for planned development overlay district, more commonly known as the Campana project. Since Susan is not here, I guess I'll just start this off. I guess we have a number of questions. I don't know if we want to just go around the table up here tonight. That would probably be the easiest way, and see if we can get the answers for the questions that we have. Who wants to start? Nick, you want to start?
Well, we had a list of questions. Is that, why don't we go right down that list? You're on the resolution. Well, while that's going, I'll start with the question. The sidewalk, I think we all received a letter today about the sidewalk along the street, that the county is not, does not see that...
The township.
The township, I'm sorry, does not see that happening. How do we resolve that in relation to this resolution? I know it's not really part of it, but we might as well address it.
Well, I don't think that, you've never asked to build a sidewalk over there, and you know, every kid that lives in that neighborhood now doesn't have a sidewalk to use there, so I don't think that makes, in my mind, a whole lot of difference. My point is to get them down. The reason I would like to see a sidewalk there would be to get them to that neighborhood if they're going to walk, if they're not going to use the service that the landlord would provide with a bus to get them to the school, that they would follow the same route that every other kid does, once they get along Fabian Parkway. I think there has to be some type of sidewalk along Fabian Parkway.
Right.
Not only that, but if I recall correctly, from the superintendent of Geneva Schools, constructing and maintaining a sidewalk from the Campana property that connects to the current sidewalk on Allen Drive, this was one of their conditional statements of support for this project. They had four, if I recall correctly, that were of note.
Now, is there a sidewalk in Allen Drive?
Parts of it.
If you get far enough north.
Scott, you want to address that?
There is a sidewalk on Allen Drive when it is in the corporate limits of Geneva. There is no sidewalk along section that is owned by the township and maintained by the township between Geneva city limits and Fabian Parkway.
Okay.
And just as a follow-up to that, my conversation with the Township Highway Commissioner was that he was not going to recommend putting that in.
Right.
I talked to him about that several months ago, and that's, that letter is partially in response to some of the commentary that's been made, but...
Now, that would be within the township boundaries along Allen Drive, not along Fabian Parkway.
Correct.
What made a bubble up today?
I'm sorry?
Well, it was a letter that came as an email from a...
Has everybody had the opportunity to see that letter?
No.
Okay. I can give it, I mean, I think it's only fair.
Public information. We just received it late this afternoon.
He's got the 10,000-yard stare, because he doesn't know what it is.
It's a letter from Geneva Township, basically saying that they're not going to put in a sidewalk along Allen Drive. Anything else, Nick? Or you have the list up?
Yeah, some technical difficulties. I'm working two machines here.
You're talking about the questions that were attached to the material on the website. I can put those up on the screen if that would be helpful. I have them here, so...
That'd be great.
Yeah.
One of those sits hanging.
I'm hanging. Not sure which one to plug in. So where do I plug?
I think it's hanging up high, Scott, isn't it? Those around the hook. Yeah.
So, for the record, I'm David Block from Evergreen Real Estate Group. Didn't say that before. I didn't prepare this Q and A. I'm happy to go through these, but I'm probably going to turn to city staff for some of them, so I don't know how you'd like to do this.
Want to just go through the list? At least discuss anything, any questions we have with any of the answers or replies in them?
Sure.
So we'll start off with stormwater.
So my, I have a question. I had asked this last week, and I think Gary might be here to answer, answer some of this as well. You know, there is a note from you folks talking about, you know, the detention not being needed, because I think it was the net change in impermeable surface area was 24,000 something, or roughly...
23,000, yeah.
Right, and 25,000 is the number that kicks in. Correct. And so, looking at the ordinance myself, it seems to be that there may be some interpretation of this. Because in the ordinance, it says aggregate. And so I think what I'd like to know is, how are we defining this? Because there seems to be some different ways people are looking at how this ordinance is stated.
Your first couple of statements are how we generally define it. So if we have, and I used in my memo to City Council, that if we were to take city or public work... Okay, there's two interpretations out there. If we were to take the public works property today, which has buildings, warehouse, parking lot, salt shed, storage bins, asphalt parking lot, there's one interpretation that says that if we disturb any more of that property, more than 25,000 square feet, that we have to provide detention. So if we were to take all that out, and we were to put in Kentucky Bluegrass or Prairie, that we'd have to provide detention for that, which intuitively doesn't make a lot of engineering sense, because we're removing all of the impervious area, replacing it with something that is very pervious, and we still have to provide detention for it, which, again... So the city has always interpreted it as the net of impervious. So in this case, they are removing impervious area, they're adding new pervious area. The net of their additions are still less than that 25,000 square foot threshold, so at least in the initial, prior to land bake parking, build-out or full build-out, they would not be required to provide stormwater detention. I would like, just to go along with that, is to clarify, there was some concern as to what's included. You're at 23X right now, 23,000 square feet, but there was questions whether the sidewalk was included in that, and then obviously that doesn't include the additional parking, the banking parking. What happens in the process when that's decided to be added on? I mean, it just, once it gets above there, that's triggered? But we track... I mean, that's part of the engineering process. Remember, really, this is land use and zoning at this point, so we don't even have official engineering plans yet. But once you would get official engineering plans, you create exhibits, and the developer has provided exhibits to us, which show areas of impervious, which is going away, areas of impervious which are staying, and areas of impervious which are then being added. So you run the three numbers and you get your total, the grand total of what's being added. So when the, when the time comes, if they ultimately do build, they'll see additional parking. We have an accounting for the property, so we know in day one how much they're adding, and when they're adding the ultimate improvement, we know how much they're adding, and as soon as they cross that threshold, they're then required to do stormwater detention.
If I may briefly, we, to supplement this Q and A that you have on the screen, which was prepared by city staff, we have prepared a few slides of a presentation, so I can try to go through those and address your questions after you finish these Q and A, however you want to do it, so...
You want to do that first, then?
Yeah.
Response, and then we can ask questions from that?
So you want to see our information first? Okay.
I can do that.
Okay, so there were a series of questions that were brought up at the last meeting, and we wanted to address some of those. Some of these duplicate some of the Q and A that came from city staff, but some of them are new information. So, a question came up about the number of people in the developments. We'll talk about that. There were some questions about heating and cooling design of the units and energy costs. We can address that. The location of amenities in the full build-out plan, and some of the drainage issues we've just been talking about here. And then this notion of, of what the county ordinance says, and this idea of being almost at 25,000 square feet. And finally, the schedule question. What's the, what's the rush with this process? So, the number of people in the development, in looking at the question that was asked, there were a couple of layers to that question, and I didn't quite understand exactly what specifically the person who was asking the question was getting at. The terms credits and people were being used in a way that was not consistent with how we're understanding the project. So I wanted to make sure that people understand what some of these terms mean. Credits are the financial tool that we use to help pay for this project. So we syndicate tax credits and we sell them. We don't refer to credits when we talk about units in the building or when we talk about people. It's, credits are a financial mechanism. Similarly, with vouchers. Vouchers are a financial mechanism, but they're also tied to a specific unit. So if you see, the table on the top there refers to the total program breakdown of the project. So you see 16 market rate units, and then the 64 affordable units at different levels. Of those various levels of affordability, 25 of those units are covered by project-based vouchers. And so when we talk about vouchers, we are talking about the 25 units that are covered by what ends up being essentially a HUD rental assistance contract to help bring down the occupancy cost for the 25 tenants who live in those units. And then there are units, and then there are people in those units. So our unit program, which has been the same program really since we started this public process, has been the same. So we have 36 one bedrooms, 38 two bedrooms, and six three-bedroom units, a total of 80 units. The typical standard in our industry is, it's a little strange, it's one and a half people per bedroom, but it's used as a statistical mechanism. So if you take that method and say, okay, one and a half people on 36 units is 54 people on 38 two-bedroom units for each of those two bedrooms, so it's basically 38 times three, is 114 people, and then you do the same calculation for the six three-bedroom units, and you get to 195 people. Now, that's going to vary, because obviously this is dependent on the number of kids people have, the number of roommates they have, whether you have a single person or a couple. But again, as a statistical measure, this is what our entire industry uses, so on average, we think we're going to have just under 200 people living in this development. And so there was an issue brought up about things that I had promised to the Fox River Valley Initiative, and I frankly don't know what that was referring to. I haven't promised units to anyone or any group in this development. The only promise is a conversation about financing through the Aurora Housing Authority, which will come before you in the form of an intergovernmental agreement sometime in the next few weeks if this process moves forward. So hopefully that clarifies some of the issues around, around those issues, those questions. The, the heating and cooling design of the building, of the units, I wanted to clarify some things about that and make sure that you have full information there, even though it's not a planning and zoning matter, but in the spirit of answering your questions and, you know, trying to get people to understand this project, we're happy to share that information. As mentioned before, this project will be heated and cooled with heat pumps, which are probably the most efficient form of residential heating and cooling there is right now. They are very efficient systems. The units, depending on whether it's the heating season or the cooling season, extracts heat or coolness from a cold water loop or a hot water loop that is paid for by the building. So in other words, our operating cost to operate the building pays to heat water to a certain level in the winter, or to cool water to a certain degree in the summer. And the heat pump unit uses an electric compressor to, using, you know, basics of thermodynamics, to extract heat or cool from that water loop, and then turn that into hot air or cool air that gets blown into the unit. And I'll show you a diagram of the unit in a second. So essentially, the owner, we, the owners, are paying for a good part of the heating and cooling system for the building, and the tenants really are only paying for the electricity required to run the heat pump unit. Plus, they pay for their plugs and their, and their electric stove and their own, you know, internet and phone service. So, you know, that's an important part of it, because that really indicates that compared to many apartment buildings where the tenants are paying, for example, for a gas furnace, and the tenants have to pay both for gas and electric, in this case, the owner is picking up an awful lot of the heating and cooling cost of the, of the building. So here's a diagram of a typical unit. This is a sectional diagram, so it's a slice through the unit, and so you can see obviously the glass block walls there. This is a, it's a little hard to see. This is a guy sitting on a sofa in here, and so I'll show you a little bit of the sort of heat flow diagram in this in a second. But essentially, as you see, there is a big living room with 16 and a half foot ceilings here. The kitchen kind of pops into the living room. And then in a two-bedroom unit, there is a bedroom on the first floor, there's a bedroom on the second floor, either one or two bathrooms, depending on the configuration, and then the stair is up against the corridor wall in the back of the unit, so the corridor wall is not shown here, but this is the, this is the common corridor of the building. So when you look at how some of the features that we've included to deal with heating and cooling costs, this, we're showing this in the winter, so basically you have cold air. As people have noted, you will get cold, not necessarily cold air, because we are going to retuck point and pretty well seal all of the, all of the masonry on the building, including the glass block. So it's not like you're going to be having drafts coming through there, but it is radiant heat transmission across a material that does not have very good insulating ability, and that's absolutely correct. But we are installing high-efficiency windows, high-performance windows below the sill line, and then the areas that don't have windows in them will have R19 insulation around them, so this entire area, basically below the four-foot sill line, will be much better performing thermally than the glass block above. And then at the head of the windows, there's another area of R19 insulation. So we're insulating as much of the perimeter as we can, given the preservation requirements here. There's a ceiling fan here. The heating and cooling unit, the heat pump, is in the center of the unit here, and the heat pump actually has a duct that goes up, and so in the winter, warm air will be blowing out both at the first floor level in here and at the second floor level in here, with a supplemental ceiling fan that helps address stratification issues. And there are ducts facing this way into both of the bedrooms, so both of those bedrooms will stay warm. And then the way the airflow will work in these units, because these units are kind of circular in a way, the air cools off and it comes down here, and it sinks down the stairs, and it comes back here. The supply for the heat pump unit is here, so the cycle starts again where the cool air is brought in. It's heated up by running across a warm water or hot water loop, and then it gets blown back out into the unit. So this person sitting on the sofa here, if you look at this, their sight line is just above the window line, so the window, the window line is, is just below their seated eyeline. So, you know, it's the nature of the units, and again, it's the nature of the historic preservation solution that we are proposing. Last point here to address the light issues that people were concerned about. There will be rolling blinds across the entire width of the glass block wall that will come all the way down, so that will enable the tenants to block out the light. If it's sunlight and they're a nurse on the night shift and they, they need to sleep, they can lower those blinds and keep the unit dark. And as needed, there will be blinds on the upper and lower bedrooms as well to provide some additional privacy. So, I'll stop there, because I've just presented a bunch of technical information. Any, any questions about these two issues that I've described?
Will those, will the rolling blinds have a thermal lining to them?
Good question. I don't know. It's something we need to explore.
We're showing cold from the radiant, if you will, from the glass block. Sorry, I'm not into the microphone. What about during the summer, when that glass block is going to let the heat through? I mean, how is this going to function then?
So let me, I'll get to that in just a second, but it's the same principle, basically, that you have, you do have basically the system running in reverse, and so the system will be blowing cold air into the unit to compensate. Even without the radiant, or the thermal lining, the shade will block some of the heat if you lower the shade on a day like today. So that is the, the basic idea, that the system is designed to run in either heating or cooling modes.
Anybody else have questions on this?
I have one question. There's one exterior wall in this unit. Are there any units that have more than one exterior wall?
There are a small number of units that are on a corner that have two exterior walls. And obviously, the, the heating and cooling design for those units is more complex. Some of those units are a little bit bigger, so they may actually have two smaller heat pump units as part of their design to help address the loads.
Anybody else?
So, to kind of get at the question about summer, we asked our, our engineer to run an energy model on this building, and so addressing the question that we heard at the last committee of the whole meeting, we mentioned that there are utility allowances that are netted out of the, the rent that is charged to tenants in the affordable units. So for a one-bedroom unit, the current published utility allowance is $66 per month. For a two-bedroom unit, it's $86 per month, and for a three-bedroom unit, it's $107 per month. That is a number that we use across the year, so it's not seasonally adjusted, that's not how the program works. And based on the size of the building, the size of the system, the current energy costs, the way we are designing this system, our engineer anticipated that the owner would bear about 50% of the heating and cooling costs, and the tenants would bear about 50% of the heating and cooling costs. So the total cost for the building is just under $60,000 a year. Of that, the tenants pay about $29,000 a year. If you divide that... If you divide that out by 80 units, by 12 months, you have the tenants paying about $30 a month on average, you know, on a day like today. That number will be higher. In the heat of August, that number will be higher. In the depths of January, that number will be higher. However, if you look at this curve here, which came from this engineering study, the red is heating season. I think we all know that despite days like today, Chicago is still a heating-dominated climate. And so the solar gain that you're going to get through those glass block windows is actually a benefit to the overall project because it's going to assist in the heating of those units on a cold winter day. And that has a further benefit if you have a cold water loop with something called diversity because the way the loop works is it runs through the entire building. And so it gathers, on a cold day, it gathers up excess heat essentially from the rest of the building. And so it ends up lowering utility costs for the entire building because on the units that are facing the sun, they need less heating. And so that gets spread throughout the entire building. We further estimated that the tenants would pay, on average, about $25 a month for their cooking and electric cooking and plugs. And so we anticipate that about $55 a month is going to be their total energy cost. Again, it varies seasonally, but the utility allowances that we've shown here are more than adequate to compensate for that.
Any questions?
Just a comment on the radiant heat on a cold winter day. Chicago in the wintertime isn't historically the sunniest place on earth.
Right.
So, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I think that argument may be a little misguided because it's usually cloudy, so.
On those days, the system will work as intended. Just very quickly moving on through the rest of this, I think some of you had asked where the amenities would be at full buildout of the full land bank parking. If you remember from the site plan, and I'm sorry to be pointing behind you here, but the soccer field is over here and the tot lot was over here. In the event of having to build the full parking buildout, we would just move the tot lot over and rotate it slightly to be up against the property line behind the parking there, so it doesn't need to go very far. And then the soccer field or pickup field, there is space for it here. And we would point out that if you look at the site and the way the grades work there, there's actually a little rise at the corner. So this rise in the topography actually serves to kind of shelter that field a little bit, both from view and from any concerns about errant balls. It's about 150 feet from the edge of this field down to the street. You've got to be a pretty hefty kid to be able to kick a ball 150 feet, so. You had also requested information about drainage and the location of the drainage structures at full buildout. So we've asked our engineer, again, as your Director of Public Works has noted, that information is typically not provided at the planning and zoning stage, but in the interest of addressing these issues and trying to solve these problems, we've tried to indicate how we would do this. So there will be two structures, basically, that are kind of surface structures in yellow. So there is a surface structure in the back corner of the property and a surface structure that's got kind of a pond. It's mostly dry except in a heavy rain event, and then it's designed to hold the water and slow it down until it can make its way into the groundwater. And then there is a tank required. This is an underground detention structure. So the total volume on the west side is about 1.3 acre feet of additional detention that would be required in the full buildout. And on the east side, it's about two acre feet of additional detention that would be required under the full buildout. So hopefully that answers your questions around that.
Quick question on that. Is that approved, that you guys could alter the front lawn that way?
I'm sorry.
Is it approved that you could alter the front lawn to put a pond, even if it's a dry retention pond?
By the historic folks or? It's essentially, you wouldn't see it any different than the way it is now. It's a pretty subtle modification of the topography in order to do that. So we're not expecting we would have any issues with the historic folks around that.
But you don't know?
I don't know. Moving on, I think you've addressed this a little bit. The initial question addressed this a little bit. This is the language from the King County Stormwater Ordinance. You are correct, sir, in that the term is aggregate here and it's talking about redevelopment. So there is the 25,000 square feet, there's the definition of redevelopment, which does not really clarify the situation that we're in here today. I did, though, want to address the question that came up from last time about, you know, almost 25,000 square feet. In our initial submission to the city, which, you know, has evolved quite a bit to where we are today, we were at about 146 parking spaces in there. And because of how we had designed the site at that point, we were essentially at zero increase in impervious area. Once we ran through the process of review with city staff and, you know, basically had some initial negotiation with Plan Commission and really with you about additional parking spaces required, we ended up at 206 in our land banking plan. And that boosted the impervious area from essentially zero to 15,000 square feet. Again, after subsequent public meetings, talking about in particular the sidewalk along the oval in the front, that was almost an additional, actually, it was, yeah, just about an additional 8,000 square feet of impervious area that was added to the site. So all of the additions to the site, this is not some, you know, mysterious process that we've gone through to magically end up just short of the target number. This has been the result of a public process where we've had conversations with the community about what they'd like to see, and that's where we ended up. Finally, on this, I'd like to address one of the questions about the schedule and what's the rush. City staff know that we have been meeting with them really since March of 2016. We had some initial conversations about the project before our submission to IDA, the Illinois Housing Development Authority, because that's part of the process, is to go and talk about the project and make sure that the project is ultimately something that can move forward. Then beginning in February of this year, we began to have some of our initial meetings. We met with one or two aldermen. For the most part, some of the responses we got were, well, we'd rather address this in a public setting, and that's fine. We did meet with Mayor Shioke a couple of times in that process. We met with District 304. We hosted a tour of the property for interested parties. And as you know, we came to meet with you initially almost five months ago on May 2 of this year. So in the process, and again, there's some detail in there about meetings that we had hoped to have with the neighbors in Geneva and ended up being uninvited to a meeting there. So we hope to show here that this has been a conversation that's been going on for quite some time. This is not something that is being rushed. This has gone through multiple conversations with multiple city Batavia boards and commissions and review by almost all of the city staff. So we wanted to make sure that you all understood that. I have a further kind of summation of the project, but I think I'm going to wait to finish going through the questions.
Good, thank you.
I have more comments, less than questions about some of the stuff regarding this. So I'm looking at the, things like the overall impact to community taxpayers, et cetera. It seems like, and there's several things bubbled in this, this is regarding, it's a, developer mentioned it, that this isn't something that's plausible without tax credits. Well, those tax credits are coming from someone. There is no developer that would go and spend this money themselves to rebuild this property because it's just not feasible. The cost of these apartments per unit, I feel like there's a better use of taxpayer money than to spend the money for what it's going to cost. We could get a lot more for our money, I guess. We feel, or I feel, like stuff from the historic committees is kind of putting a bind on us, saying, well, we can't do this, we can't do that, we're limited in what we can do, we can't change out the glass block, we can't make less windows, all kinds of things that would make this product much more, or this project much more feasible. I worry about when and if Fabian and 31 intersection is expanded. It would absolutely turn the project into a right-in, right-out. A right-in, right-out, anybody wanting to go to Geneva is likely to turn right, go down Allen Drive, cut through the neighborhood, and wind their way back out to 31. I have a problem with that for the Allendale residents. Right now, I have a problem because we haven't gotten a lot of the comments back from HUD and IDOT, KDOT. I just don't feel like this is something we can move on right now, in my opinion. I think not doing the parking right now is not knowing whether or not this retention pond is going to be approved in the front. Then what? Oh, that's not approved, now what do we do? And then the developer, you know, what if that's too costly? I don't even know how to answer that question if that's not something that can be done. Many people have said it before, but I agree, I just don't know that what we're trying to do to this building is the right use of the building. I don't know if there is a right use of the building. I mean, if we go back to the fact that this is a factory that was built many years ago, and it was a factory, it'd probably make a great factory, but I don't think anybody's building factories out of that location right now. I think we are, like I said, it hasn't been developed because it's historic property. It's been historic property for a long time, and that might be a problem for us. It just may not be a building that's viable for anything in today's day and age, based on the constraints. I'll stop for there, I'll stop right there for now.
Tony?
Let us talk. I don't have any specific questions, I just have comment. I would say, I drove by, have driven by there several times and explored it, and I will add, being new here, I was not here in the process, however, I have been following along and have kept myself abreast of what's been happening here. I see this as an opportunity for a building that's in decay. Having been in the building trades, having talked in this town, building trades, and have worked with the city for many years on different projects, the confidence that I have in the city and the recommendation that I'm hearing from these people that, you know, I value tremendously, I think it's a great opportunity. We have historic monument here that, you know, it's not going to be with us too much longer if nothing's done. There have been attempts for time to do things, but nothing has materialized. With all that said, I feel most strongly about supporting this project because I've spent my life advocating for less fortunate people. I have been in, here in this, in our community, but also around the world. We have a big problem with haves and have-nots in this country, and I see this as an opportunity for us to do something in a town like Batavia that is compassionate. I advocate for people that work very hard and don't earn a living wage, and they live right in our community. And for that, I think we have an opportunity, you know, not only to preserve a building, but we have an opportunity to give a hand up to some people that are really, really hurting. And that's my thoughts on the project.
Elliot?
I admit I'm on, I'm seeing both sides of this. I definitely agree that there are people in our community, they work in our community. They are, in some cases, relatives and family friends that we've known for many years. They are working in local shops downtown on Randall Road, you know, they are plugged into our schools. They work and commit themselves to our community, and so I would very much like to see them in our community. That being said, I also agree with Alderman Uer in the fact that this is a building that comes with a ton of restrictions, that doesn't make it the most convenient for any option. That intersection right there, I don't know what you could put as far as a project on that corner that would be okay in terms of adding to the flow through of that intersection. That is just an inherently dangerous intersection. I've spoken with so many people that, you know, have raised personal stories just in trying to cross that intersection, whether on a bike or in a car, let alone on foot. It's a dangerous intersection. I know my wife freaks out every time we have to come east on Fabian and approach that alternate direction coming at you. I recognize what I've heard somebody else say before, that anything retail is going to increase the traffic demand of that intersection much more than residential, but that doesn't mean we have to still do residential. I don't know that we can emphasize enough to King County and the state that this intersection needs work, but I have trouble supporting anything going into that area that is going to add to the flow of that corner without first addressing the danger of that intersection. The people that I've heard most from, and I've certainly been trying to keep a tally, I've right now been listening and hearing what is about 92% of people against and 8% for. That's not a scientific study, but I've been trying to keep an active tally. So right now, I struggle with a lot of things about this project, and certainly one of which is if the full footprint puts the soccer field closest to that intersection, kicking a ball 150 feet is doable, especially if it can roll.
I take a different stance on the advocacy of anyone who lives there. Is what we're doing or changing in our zoning codes benefiting any future residents that are going in there? The reason why the stormwater detention and the tot lots and all of those things make, are important to me, not because it's not part of the process, it's because we are being asked to make a change, varying our zoning code for the parking. Because I hear the contention that the approved plan is 201 with the tot lot, that is not the case. Right now, we haven't voted on it. It's presumptuous to say otherwise. Right now, the parking on that property is 301 spaces. For us to change it, there has to be a reason. And I'm trying to find why I'm going to do a change and what, when I do vote on it, what are the implications of that vote? If those answers can't be made to me, then why am I changing what the zoning code is? Because if it's supposed to be 301, then put it at 301 and leave it at that. And if then it has to be dealt with, well, then it has to be dealt with. Because then it goes back to, do we have enough parking on the site for everyone to go in there? It has never been residential. It's always been a factory. So we know what the traffic is and out with, with it being a factory patterns. We've never known what the residential use in and out of there is going to be. So why would we, without, with having those unknowns, dismiss them? And not take the knowns, which are the dangerous intersections, and try to guess where we're going for a use that's never been? And we're shrinking our standards that we would apply on in any other situation? The, the unknowns are what I want us to be able to reasonably predict, because we're the ones that are going to be deciding whether or not we're going to be making the changes. If we can't decide, if we can't see what's going to happen in the future, then why are we going to change?
Scott, next?
Yeah, part of our job here is, is to advocate for, you know, for our constituents and, and make decisions on their behalf in the best interest of our community, and particularly in the best interest of those citizens that are going to be here. And sometimes they're not easy. Like, this is not easy. There's a lot going on. That being said, there's, there's a lot we still don't know. To Marty's point, there's a lot, there's a lot of unanswered questions. And, and I don't feel comfortable making a decision without those questions being answered, or at least having more information, HUD report, IDOT, those things. You know, you talk about factory patterns, well, that factory's been closed for a long time, so, and that intersection has changed along with it. And, you know, I've said this before, if you live in Geneva or Batavia, you've taken your life into your hands at least once in, in that intersection. And that concerns me. And to answer the question about the ball coming off of a soccer field, absolutely they can kick a ball 30 yards. Listen, okay, and, and, you know, that, having, you know, going, going west on that road, taking that bend, and having a ball come out scares the snot out of me. Because we have, I mean, the accidents that happened there are horrific now. You add that in, that's, that's, that's real trouble. So, and now, however we address that, we address it, you know, and I know we can't have fences up or whatever, but, you know, these are, these are questions that we need to answer. And I, and I, that being, you know, I appreciate the effort going into this. It takes a lot of wherewithal and a lot of planning and trying to make something like this happen. The other side of what we're trying to do is we're trying to better our community, we want to stimulate investment, we want to bring development in. And so, making these decisions, if we said no, well, then we're stymieing growth. If we say yes, then maybe we're putting people into, no, into harm's way. And so, we want to make sure we are making a correct decision. And in my opinion, I just don't have all the, all the information in front of me yet to make a, a wise and informed decision. And so, we have, we have a ways to go, yeah.
Dan?
First of all, Scott, I'm definitely going to agree with you. I still have more questions. We still need to hear from HUD, we still need to hear transportation issues. 80/20 is my number, not quite 90, but it's, it's our word.
It's not scientific, for sure.
It's our word, people are calling, I've mentioned, people call me 11:30 at night, drunk. I get a lot, a lot of phone calls and emails on this. I walked into this project, having grown up here since I was 10 years old, knowing that this building was scary looking. What are you going to do with a building like this? And we've heard these ideas of what it could be, but no one had the money, nobody, it's going, it's going to take tax money to fix this thing, that's, that's, that's really what it comes down to. So we make a value judgment. As a group, do we think that this should be residential? I think that's a very basic philosophical question. If this is going to be a mixed-use property, do we as a group agree that residential is an appropriate use for this corner? If it's not, we should take a different direction. If we do agree the residential is possible, yes, 300 spaces, you have to have at least 300 spaces, I will not support a project that can't park itself, that makes zero sense. But, okay, let's say we take residential on, we make this a commercial property, I have to drive through this intersection twice a day, I need to drive through to visit my mom on the other side of town. I'm not interested in creating any more traffic accidents, I've heard firsthand stories of, of people telling me about their family members who've been injured at that intersection. 10 years as a newspaper reporter, I covered my fair share of fatal accidents, I'm not interested in, in making this any more dangerous. Elliot, three of the most dangerous intersections in Kane County are in our ward, this is, this is one of them. And that terrifies me, and I didn't even think about the soccer ball. I am not any good at sports, I can kick a soccer ball that far, I know that I could. And yeah, now I got that image in my head of a soccer ball hitting, hitting my pessot while I'm driving to work, I'm terrified about that. But then there's this other part of me, and, Tony, I'm really happy to hear you say what you said regarding compassion, because I had to buy this cup of coffee, and I, I paid for it, and the person who sold it to me makes minimum wage, and I shouldn't expect that person to drive more than a half hour to get to their job. So we're either going to be a bedroom community for bankers, lawyers, and chiropractors, and CEOs, or we're going to be a diverse community where we can shop, eat, play, that's another philosophical question, I suppose. And yeah, it's a factory, but I've also been inside the Ovaltine factory in Villa Park, is anyone familiar with that project? It's amazing, it's a factory in the middle of nowhere, in these beautiful smokestacks where people live. I've been in a factory in Atlanta that was turned into these beautiful lofts. You can do amazing things if you were willing to put care, time, and money into it. So Evergreen, I think you have the expertise. I looked at your other, your properties, all of them are fantastic, except for two of them. And people seem to have a real problem with, they're ones that you guys took over? Is that, is that what?
Which, which ones you asking about?
Is there one in Elgin, like, people come, here's the email I get, "How could you possibly approve a project when these guys don't know how to manage a property? Here's a screenshot of their, of their Yelp reviews." That is, I mean, that's the Elgin one, but I understand that that was also very, it's not apples and oranges kind of thing.
Correct.
Bought that one?
We, we bought that project over three phases, basically, and it was designed with a completely different concept than this. Those are not mixed income, those are 100% concentrated low income, very low income.
The words I had to use with that drunk person that called me 11:30 at night is, yeah, maybe that's not a really good example of the work that they do, and if that's the kind of project that they're going to bring to Batavia, yeah, I'm not interested in it either. But I don't think that's what this project is.
No.
What I see is a big, beautiful, old building, someone willing to put some money into it, someone who was savvy enough to run the numbers and see that it was possible, if you were super creative about this. And then you showed that picture, that cross-section, I was very clear that I was not interested in putting someone who's asking for tax dollars for assistance with their basic rent, they have to pay a bunch of money for heating the place or cooling the place. I lived in this beautiful farmhouse, party house after college, and we had like $900 bills in February for our, our heating, but we loved that house, and we made sacrifices so we could live in this house. There was no insulation. It sounds like you guys are going to do a good job in making this an energy-efficient place, so thank you for, did you guys put that slide together because of that last meeting?
We did.
Thank you, I appreciate that, because I'm, I'm less terrified about what it would be like to live there and, and have to pay a gas bill. It doesn't seem unreasonable, is, is really what, what I'm getting at. Incidentally, I'm, I'm one of the guys that blew you off for one of those meetings beforehand, I said I think we should talk about this in a.
And here we are.
I'm glad things worked out the way, the way that they did. And the last thing I have to, I have to address is this sort of fear thing, that this permeates most of the telephone calls that I get, and I have stopped answering in emails, because my tone of voice in email is apparently not conducive to conversation. Getting a flame war is when I write people, when I get people on the phone and I say, "What are you afraid of?" And people seem to be afraid of this unknown, people are afraid of who's going to be moving into this place, and at one of the, the meetings, we had a couple ladies get up, very brave of them to say, "I'm the people you're afraid of. I work at the homestead across the street. This is my friend, she doesn't have a husband anymore, she's got a kid, and we have this roommate situation working out. And maybe this is, you know, their transition, maybe this is what they need to finish dental school," I think is what the lady said. That doesn't seem, that doesn't seem unreasonable to me. So if we can raise it to 300 spaces, if we can talk about finding a way to make amenities to this property more safe, a place where, where kids can actually play on, on the property, this doesn't, this doesn't seem like it's impossible. And my, my absolute last part is this intergovernmental agreement with Aurora, I keep hearing this, "Why are you letting Aurora people move in here? Shouldn't Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles people move in here?" This intergovernmental agreement with Aurora Housing Authority, this is kind of pretty central to what a lot of people are concerned about, is, are we helping our neighbors, or are we helping people from Chicago? What, what can we do with an intergovernmental agreement with, with the Aurora Housing Authority that, well, one that's legal and one that meets the, the needs? I remember you guys saying at that last meeting, "You can market this place," and you think our, our community will be able to fill this, as it is.
Yes.
And I understand there's a waiting list at the Aurora Housing Authority that will fill the rest of the units if you can't. But what can we do with an intergovernmental agreement? I mean, those are just words right now, what, what can we do with that?
So it's not a question of what can you do with it, but why do we need it? Why, why are we asking for it, essentially? Kane County is one of a number of counties in Illinois that do not have their own housing authority. And so, there are really two housing authorities that are kind of immediately proximate and that serve parts of Kane County. Aurora is one, Elgin is the other one. We happen to have a relationship with the Aurora Housing Authority because of the work that we did at St. Charles Hospital. And so, under state law, in order for a housing authority to serve a particular community outside of their jurisdiction, there needs to be an intergovernmental agreement that establishes the need for that housing in this community. So that, in a nutshell, is the point of that intergovernmental agreement. We will point out that the senior housing project that's under construction right now has the same kind of issue, is that it was operating in a little bit more of an informal way, and this simply formalizes the state making a designation saying that we recognize there is a need for some proportion of affordable housing in the city of Batavia. And it gives you sort of that official blessing, the city council acknowledging that. So that's, that's what that, that's what that document is for. My understanding is this is not before you this evening, but, so, in any case, that's, that's what it's for.
As part of those negotiations, is that where we codify where there's a social services office in this building? Is that where we codify AID gets a space in here to help connect people with resources?
Those, no, those will be codified as part of the, sort of the separate legal structuring of the project. You know, I did speak with the director of the Aurora Housing Authority just the other day, and Scott, I don't, did you, did you speak with her?
I did also, yes.
So, you know, right now, I think there are discussions not just about what we've called affirmative marketing to the Batavia, Geneva, you know, tri-cities community, but actually setting up a, a local preference for Batavia, Geneva, maybe St. Charles residents. My view of that is, is I'm kind of agnostic about that, as long as it meets fair housing requirements and HUD is willing to sign off on it, and it ultimately is HUD's decision to sign off on that, we're willing to, we're willing to do that. So, you know, that's, that's a big part of it. What is different about the agreement we have here versus the agreement at St. Charles Hospital is the housing authority has committed to a site-based waiting list, which is different than a local preference. And so, it will not be people coming from the Aurora Housing Authority waiting list, it will be people who walk in the door at the Campana saying, "I want to rent an apartment here, my income is below this level, can I get one of these units?" And that's, it's a very different process, but that will be codified as part of this IGA.
And that's someone with an income issue, that's someone with, with a, like, a profoundly disabled person that qualifies as well?
They have to, they have to be below a certain income level in order to qualify, but other than that, and then we do a background check and the housing authority does a background check, so.
Thank you.
Could I make your mention of that? I did talk to the director of the Aurora Housing Authority, first, and this will be an item in front of you at some point, so we're still working out some language, but we already have an agreement with the Aurora Housing Authority right now that allows 12 vouchers to be issued within the corporate limits. So that was already an agreement we've had, you know, for some time now, nobody's used it, but, you know, in recent times, but that is out there. Also, just to note that we actually have three housing authorities that operate within the city, it's Aurora, Elgin, as well as the DuPage Housing Authority. So we actually have three that are operating with vouchers within the city limits. We did talk about some things regarding the site-based list, but we also talked about preference points as well. And I think that's one of the things that some people are concerned about, is, you know, can anybody just apply and come in? Perhaps somebody can, but we can also assign preference points to individuals for certain categories, for example, if they are within the city, live within the city of Batavia, or say, within the tri-cities townships, or disabled veterans, we can assign certain preference points to individuals that are on that list. So those people would essentially have first pick of the units if that happens. So that's what we're talking about, trying to finalize the language on that, and then that would be coming in front of you at some point in the future, you know, as part of your consideration. Thank you.
All right. Mike?
Yes. I agree with Scott, I think we still have a lot of unanswered questions, which brings up, I have, I do have a couple questions, and Joel, this pertains to what you said at our last meeting. You said that KDOT and IDOT said that no modifications need to be done on Fabian and Route 31. Do we know how they came up with that conclusion?
They have their own review process.
Okay.
And the information that we received largely through Evergreen was that KDOT was not making any requirements for this project moving forward. They did talk about things that may happen in the future regarding right in, right out, et cetera, but as far as any requirements specifically to this development, we have, we haven't heard anything from KDOT about that.
So they haven't officially done a study yet?
I don't know.
Okay.
They just haven't said anything about any requirements.
Okay. And my next question is, we have all been debating on what to do on this property and what needs to be passed and what doesn't need to be passed. Do we have, have we heard from the seller at all and what his perspective is on this? I understand his property's been for sale for a long time. We've heard from tenants in the building that it's not livable, but yet there are tenants in that building. So I have some concerns with that. And I just was wondering if we have talked to the seller, maybe there's a need to sell it? I mean, the property is getting run down, there might be, these people might need to sell this property, and they want to get rid of it.
We have not asked for a statement from the owner of the property. We know that he, he wants this to, he wants the sale to take place, he wants this approval also. He's attended the meetings, he may even be here this evening, I believe I saw him earlier, I'm not sure if he's still here.
Okay, that's all I have.
I'm here.
Did you want to say something, sir?
Sure. I have a PhD in this building, why not? This is the most creative development consistent with the zoning requirement.
You need to use the mic so that we get this recorded and it's on TV.
This is the most creative development consistent with the requirements that you have put in place that I have ever seen. This is the first developer that has met all of the requirements of the historic preservation folks and has the financial wherewithal to do a mixed-use project in this building. This is what you wanted. It's very unlikely that you're going to sell luxury condominiums in this building. I think we can all agree on that. This is a good use based on the requirements that you have put in place.
This is a good use based on the requirements that you have put in place. If you want a mixed-use project, if you want a residential project, this is a, I've walked a lot of residential developers through this property and I have, none of them have ever gotten to this level. I've submitted my own proposals and no one, and we've never gotten this far. So, you know, I don't know whether it's a good idea or not. I didn't make the requirements. I just found the highest and best use based on the requirements that you gave us. In 2010, by the way, when you put this zoning in place, what I said at the time was, "We're going to need relief on your parking requirements." I think you should do this project. This is about the only way I can think of that you're going to get this building developed in one grand and glorious plan. Will the building crumble without this project? Probably not. You know, I think we do a pretty fair job of maintaining it. It may not look great. It's a little scary at night, but, you know, it probably won't fall apart. But the clock is ticking. You know, there aren't that many projects out there that are going to be able to meet all of your requirements. So if you don't do this project, you better go to ground zero and change what your thinking is for this building. You know, because, like I said, this is the highest and best use. This is the most creative development that I've seen. It's, you know, economically viable, financially feasible, and we're trying to figure out if it's politically achievable. By the way, my partners will have my head on a platter if you don't do this project.
And Mike, that's good. Your honor, you want to chime in?
Yeah, let me, being the oldest elected official in the room here as far as longevity in office, let me just offer a few rambling thoughts I have. First of all, our newest alderman, I'm very pleased with some of his comments tonight when he talked about, tried to address the diversity that has been part of the Batavia experience from the history of this town. And going back to the 1850s, there's a very strong record that we had three churches in town, the Congregational, the Methodist, and the Episcopal on Batavia Avenue that were kind of the leaders in the region for being the headwinds for the abolitionist movement before the Civil War and where we allowed slaves and people who left the South or whatever came in here. And we took great honor in being that place. And over the years, I think, I like to think that as a community, we've kept that going. And we've worked real hard to have a very integrated and every race, religion, color, creed, nationality is represented hopefully in this town, and every block and every neighborhood has a little bit of it, and we wear that with a great badge of honor. Interestingly, as times move on and things change, sometimes you find out that people of every race, religion, color, and creed aren't always the nicest people, and you do have problems with them. And so this council, a number of years ago, embarked upon crime-free housing. And we sent police officers to class and school, and we had attorneys research it for us. And we enacted a crime-free housing ordinance in this town, which says basically if you're living in an apartment in this community and you go out and create some crime or create trouble, we have every intention in the world of inviting you to leave. And we've done that, I believe, now seven times. We've asked people that were here, and what's unique about it is it's been virtually, it's just as I said, it's been every race, religion, color, and creed has been asked to depart our premises because we didn't like what they want to do or what they were trying to do. So, you know, I think I certainly take, get my back up when I hear somebody make comments sometimes, and I, you know, I think it's just the natural, normal way of people's attitude sometimes that you have to deal with, and you take it with a grain of salt and don't let it go. Because I think in Batavia, that would be a hard one to ever overcome, that you want the city council to walk away from this great diversity thing that we have here. And certainly, I suppose this project does represent some opportunity to do that going forward. So I would say that in favor of it. One thing that's come up a couple of times, and I chuckle about it because it goes back to my first term in office, there was quite a little thing going for a while between Batavia and Geneva about building sidewalks on Route 31. And then we got into the building of the Fox River Bike Trail on the old railroad right of way that ran up into Fabian's Forest Preserve. And then there became some comments about people from Batavia, you know, at least wanting to be able to walk to Fabian's. And so I don't, I believe everybody I'm talking about is now dead, so I'm not meaning to bring up about anybody, I'm not going to name names, but I will tell you that I sat at a meeting one time in Geneva, and things got a little bit heated and hot. And so the then-county board chairman of Kane County ordered the then-Kane County Superintendent of Transportation to go out and have it surveyed to the inch as to where exactly in front of the Campana property the Batavia and Geneva city limits were. And so that was done. There were stakes up there in the ground and everything else. And if you go there today, there is a sidewalk that runs in front of Campana, the entire length of the Batavia city limits, till you get to where that sidewalk stops, and then you know you are in Geneva because that's been legally surveyed. So I just offer that as a conversation that that's certainly, you know, I've had people say, "Why does Campana have a sidewalk in front of it?" I guess if nothing else, it was the desire of the then-county board chairman to give people in Batavia the opportunity to at least walk themselves across the street from Campana and then take their life in their hands, but cross 31 and get into the front gate. So that was going on. So I think the thing that I am a little bit troubled about, about the plan here, is the fact that if you go up there right now and look at the accesses that go off of Fabian Parkway, one goes across the street into the Homestead property, and the other one goes into this particular piece of property. And if you go and look at, if you drive your car in and both sides of the street, you will see that the Homestead property is basically a right-in, right-out for all intent and purposes, whereas the Campana exit remains open. Now, being the mayor of Batavia and because the, or the, the Homestead residents are my constituents, I certainly take great concern and interest as to how all this is going to work if in fact something gets approved. So I will tell you right here, I have been the last, well, I was gone out of town last week, but the week before, I had direct conversations with the leadership of the Kane County Highway Department, in which I specifically requested that they do a study on those accesses into the Campana and to the Homestead property. And I suggested that they look at specifically restricting the access or the exiting out onto Fabian Parkway that the Campana people now have. Because if you look at it, you think about how the people from the Homestead are coming up Fabian Parkway, and they're trying to make a turn into their property. If you've got somebody coming out of the Campana property, you've got people driving right in front of them while they're trying to turn. So there's a bunch of things there that are, and many of the drivers at the Homestead, because of their age, are slower drivers. There's a lot of moving issues here. So the county highway department promised me faithfully, and I have every belief this is now being done, they are doing a little study about it and are going to be prepared to have some conversation with the powers that be when this is, once anything is finally determined going on there. The other thing that I guess I would tell you, I've had several conversations with the superintendent of schools in Geneva, referenced the sidewalk issue. And, you know, I've found out a long time ago, the more sidewalk you can build wherever it is, the better off you all are. And I've had people, "Oh, nobody's ever going to use this sidewalk." And I'm talking about lots of different sidewalks now. And nowadays, there's such a trend toward walking and getting exercise and for health reasons and going to school, that every sidewalk that I think we've ever built in this town, and many of you have participated in our program, in which we have always built a little new sidewalk every year someplace in town, that it's all been wise investment, and there's probably been some people saved from being hit by a car or whatever else because we have it. So I don't know how we approve this project without some way to get these children that would be in there between there and the Western Avenue School on a safe route. And I've been up there, and if you look at the Sidwell maps, you can almost figure out how much would have to be built down Allen Drive to at least connect it up to the existing sidewalk that picks up there. And, you know, I don't, it doesn't sound like the Geneva township says they don't want to pay for it. You know, I just think that, I don't know how we do this. I have a real trouble with this project as long as we don't have a sidewalk that goes to that school, because the superintendent tells me, he's a wave specifically at the elementary level, that that's where most of the kids, if there are any generated out here, where they would, that's the school they would go to. Totally understandable to me as to what's going on. So the other one that I guess I've heard some comments about is the drainage. And, you know, Campana, going back to when it was first built, and it is obviously a historic building in our community and one that it would be nice to think that, you know, 100 years from now would still be there as a kind of a very unique landmark piece, very similar to what we were able to accomplish with the Bellevue Place. Now, that one, as you may remember, went through its nightmare and its tenuous history for a while until we finally cut some deals. And there had to be a deal made there. And what we had to do was agree to let a developer build 33 nice townhouses around it with the understanding that he would then go in and finish that building off and repair it and remodel it and bring it up to modern standards, which was all done. But that was, so that was probably about a six- or seven-year conversation before we find we're able to accomplish that, but it did get accomplished. So there's just some stuff here. The drainage thing, I was, you know, kind of taken back the other day when Frank was at, or not last week's meeting because I wasn't able to be here, but I think I've been to every other meeting, when they talked about they had sold those two medical buildings that are there and the land that surrounds it. I'm just wondering what we're going to do if they ever come back to us and say, "We want to build another building on this property." I would think we're going to have to talk to them about building retention ponds on that particular piece of property, as I think we rightfully have to talk about building some on this particular piece of property. And I just think that if we don't require the proper amount of drainage onto that property, I think that could be an issue of very readily accessible litigation that would be raised about, you know, you've approved something that doesn't have the right and proper amount of drainage that should be put together. So I would caution us about getting involved in that. So those are my thoughts.
Alan?
Yes.
When we started this, I thought it was just questions. So I gave my two cents. I'll make it one cent. I'll make it quick. And I might offend some historical fans, but if it were up to me, I would tear the thing down and start over. With that said, I would want to build something bigger with more traffic problems, with more parking problems, more soccer balls, more drainage issues. So with that said, what I think what the owner said struck a chord, this is kind of what we wanted. We were tasked to save this building. This is the best use for it. I think the onus is on us and staff to make sure we address the safety issues that is always going to be at that intersection. We need to address the drainage issues, and we need to address, you know, sidewalks getting to school and the parking, all those things. I don't know, you know, where this vote comes in, when we address it, and I think we need to figure the process out to make sure that those are at the forefront and we don't push something through without it getting addressed. But with that said, I support this project and think it's a good plan and really support the concept of being compassionate at the same time, so.
Thank you.
Dan?
A question for the mayor. The property next door sold? It's in motion or what?
No, I'm talking about the--
The medical building to the west.
In the front on Fabian, the buildings to the west where the medical offices now are, that was originally part of the Campana parking lot. And when Mr. Ward, which their family still does it, he was the one that came up the idea of building the medical offices up there. And so now I guess they have sold that property to somebody else, and I'm just wondering whomever that somebody is, if they want to come in here sometime and say, "Well, we want to build another building there," somebody here is going to have to start asking about retention on that separate piece of property versus this. Because I, you know, I think there was always a perception by some of you that all that was one big ownership and one piece of property, and that all this would, you know, play to, work together and play together, but it sounds like these are two separate parcels now.
The reason I brought it up was be, I thought you meant the property to the north.
No.
Because the property to the north, that intersection right there is far enough away for a stoplight, that's all.
Alan?
Marty?
I just want to address a certain part of this, that if you're questioning, and I think this has been a source of frustration with a lot of people, that if you have concerns about the property, that it automatically means you might not want this place to become for affordable housing. I say it's completely the opposite, that because it's affordable housing, we're being asked to remove those things that make it a good place to live, in my mind, because we've codified these rules. Why is it always that when we're talking about affordability, that we're making, we're skimping on our codes because it's affordable? Mr. Mayor has stated it's not going to be for luxury apartments. That's true. Because they would be demanding these amenities to be put in.
Nobody else has anything? Most of what, most of what we've talked about already are the few things that I have down here. The biggest things that I want, I've always looked at this as an opportunity to do something different with that intersection, regardless if it's just them giving up the property, getting the county on board with the other two corners that they own, bringing Homestead into the mix to try to make things better at the entire intersection. And I know that that's a ways away because I think that the county in 2030, 2050, whatever their plan is that's out there, they eventually want to put another lane, a bridge, and then straighten that intersection out to make it better than it is. I don't think we're ever going to make it quote-unquote "safe" because we can't legislate against stupid drivers, I guess is the easiest way to put it. I would like to see us work with KDOT and IDOT to try to lower the speed limits surrounding that intersection, because I think that's one of the biggest things. We have all kinds of places where we have kids kicking soccer balls out in the streets. We've got schools that border right along streets, but they don't have a 40 or 45 mile an hour speed limit. And they certainly don't have people driving as fast as they do every day past that. I test drive cars by there every day. So I go through that intersection all the time. I know what kind of danger it is. I know that if I pick somebody up or drop somebody off at the Homestead, I'm making a right-hand turn in there. And I'm a pretty aggressive driver. I don't mind pulling out in front of somebody, but I always turn right in and right out out of there. So I don't think if we're going to approve this, that we need to do anything quickly. We need to find out from KDOT and IDOT what their true plans are. Are they looking at forcing a right-in and right-out if the parking lot is bigger, if there's that many more cars there? I want to know those answers now, so we make informed decisions about the entire piece of property moving forward. The same is true with the stormwater. I want to see what that plan is before we approve this, not three years from now when whatever trigger makes them have to change that parking lot. I'd rather see the parking lot be built now and the stormwater be incorporated into that. So that way, we know into the future what this is going to be, because we might not be here in a couple of years to make the decisions on what we said we would approve or what they said they would do for us. Because as most people know, if you have it, even if it's in an agreement, sometimes it doesn't happen. We went through this with sidewalks on the west side of Randall Road that we've had issues with. So I don't want to put something in there and then have to try to come back here in a few years and force somebody to do that. I'd rather see it be done upfront and before we do this. I think that the entire time I've lived in this city since 1972, this has been a very diverse community, and I don't have a problem with us having mixed income, low income, whatever you want to call it. It can work in this community. And people that don't like that or don't want that, they can move somewhere else. That's my feeling. I think now we have to figure out how we're going to move forward with this. I doubt we're going to take any kind of vote tonight on it because we still have people from the public that have signed up to speak tonight that weren't here before that would like to speak. I think we've got enough time to allow them to speak tonight. How many do we have on the list?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Do you want to reply to anything while you're up here that we've talked about since you went through your--
I think only to talk a little--
I think only to talk a little bit about timing and schedule. You know, as I showed on the slide, we have been talking with the city for about 18 months. We have been in the midst of a public conversation about this project for almost five months. Even if we have boundless patients, our funders don't. And so, at some point, the opportunity that this project represents, that our proposal represents, won't be able to continue the process. And, you know, I, clearly that, for the people who oppose that, this project, that's obviously music to their ears. IDOT will not issue another allocation of credits for another project on this site. So, I don't want to imply that this is the one and only shot of this, but as Frank noted, as the preservation partners of the Fox River Valley have noted, this is the first proposal for this building that has come forward in about 25 years. And I understand your desire to get all of your questions answered. We have been working in good faith and as transparently as I think any developer can to try to make sure that your questions get addressed. But at some point, there needs to be a decision. And at some point, as an applicant, at some point as a property owner, we do feel like we need to have that, have that decision move forward, one way or the other. So, I think that's, that's all I need to say about the schedule.
Okay. Dan?
I do not want these remarks to be perceived as shutting any comment down. We have listened to 12 hours of testimony. There are very few points of view that I don't think we have heard. To his point, are there any decisions that we can make whatsoever regarding this?
The way the ordinance is written in my, the way I read it, pretty much everything that we've asked for, for answers are conditions, whether it's the KDOT, the IDOT, maybe not the HUD questions. I think that's the one that's not listed in there. Am I right?
No, we did not put any HUD conditions because those are related to funding and not to the zoning.
And not the zoning side, okay. You know, really, the questions we have are more related to zoning and the variances than anything else that's been brought up, that's been added in the 21 conditions that are on here.
Are there any decisions we can make? Anything? Because if we were to take a straw poll right now and 10 of us are not interested in this project, we should probably communicate that. Or are we willing to try and work on resolving some of these issues or waiting for some of these answers or making a decision? I want 300 spaces. I'm curious how many of the rest of us want those 300 spaces too.
I believe that that's something that needs to be part of this. That and the stormwater, I mean, even though it's not part of this approval of the zoning changes, I think we needed to see that. We needed to know that there's a plan on site, all the stormwater, not just, you know, oh, it'll come one that has to be engineered when we change the parking lot.
Well, I guess that's part of the point. I mean, if we say, "We want all 300 spots," that kicks in stormwater. That kicks in whether or not all the historical districts are going to approve the, a pond in the front, it's going to kick off whether, I mean, there's all kinds of things that aren't answered. And if we do all kinds of things conditionally and then we kick in the parking later and it's like, "Oh, no, we can't put the pond there like we thought we could," then what we've just seen tonight means nothing.
So, that's why I'm asking, are there, are there conditions that we're okay with making or are there conditions we're not okay with making? Because we could actually make a couple, two, three decisions tonight and push this project in a direction to go away or to happen.
I would say, I mean, if you ask about parking, I would say absolutely, I want parking. I want the sidewalk all the way to Allen Drive.
Should we make a list?
We can make a list and add it to there.
I'm just, I'm saying, I have listened to 12 hours of testimony. There are very few things that will sway my decision if, that my colleagues here are not interested in doing some things. That's where the real work is done and we are kicking the key down the road if we're not answering some of these questions. I feel like we need to make some decisions on what we're willing to tolerate and what we are not willing to tolerate with this project.
So, would you be talking about going through the modifications?
Yeah.
And just giving a yea or nay?
So, for example, with one North Washington, the retail on Wilson, that's a nonstarter for me. And so, if that project shows up with residential on the first floor, I'm a no vote. Okay, that project might go away now. One of mine is 300 parking spaces. That's pretty important to me. I absolutely agree with you. So, I feel like Marty and I just made a decision. I'm curious if anyone agrees with that.
I would agree with that.
Well, and curiously though, I mean, part of my comments were that there's so much about this that we're being held to what historical preservation says we have to keep, which in my mind does not make it a livable property, no matter how many sidewalks and parking spaces there are.
So, that's another decision for us then, is this a, is this a acceptable residential property? It sounds like you're a no on that.
And is it acceptable for us to spend tax dollars, no matter where they come from? Because they still come from our pockets.
Sure.
No matter what, everybody's sitting here, everybody's paying these taxes. People outside of this state are paying the taxes because there's federal dollars involved.
Right.
So, we're making a decision. We're making a, yeah, sure, I'd rather them be here, but I just disagree in principle with how much we're using tax dollars at this level. I mean, at the cost per apartment, when if we found some other venue, we could get a lot more bang for our buck for that amount of money. Now, maybe you're not going to get all that, I get it, historical tax dollars, all kinds of stuff, but it just seems awfully expensive. A developer, you're not going to get luxury condos in there because the developer is not going to spend $400,000 per unit and be able to sell those for a half a million dollars or more per unit when the people can't see outside, when the heating and cooling is, as condos, the heating and cooling is going to be through the roof. I mean, there's so many things about it that just don't, you wouldn't do it as a regular property. If I was a developer and the developers that haven't been coming forth for 25 years because eh, with historical preservation, I can't make this work. So, the only way we're making this work is by throwing our money, and it's not the city 's Batavia's money, but every resident around here, a bit of their tax dollars goes to it. Unreasonable.
So, I'm curious, if eight of us agree with you, then that's another decision.
Here's a low hanging fruit. The cell towers. Okay. The code states cellular antennas are not allowed on residential buildings. Correct. And that's what we're approving for the variance on that. I have never heard a reason as to why we would allow that, other than potentially, I would assume financial.
It's a financial component.
And if that was the case, is that a reason that we would then not allow every single residential development to put cell towers? And is that something we want to see? So, if it is not anything other than financial, if there is no reason other than that, then the cell towers, in my mind, would go away.
Or relocated to a more-
Or relocated somewhere where it would fit the zoning code. It can't be on a residential property. That's, those are one of those non-starters. If we're talking about putting residential cell towers on residential properties, we're either allowing it for the future or we're not.
Well, and are we okay with it because it's a mixed use?
Right.
I believe that the cell installations that exist there, if the comprehensive plan was changed to allow residential at the Campana property in 2010 and those cell towers already existed there, then it seems to me the decision was made that residential could exist where those cell towers were. And by allowing the variance in this case would not mean that new residences that are being built or existing residents that don't have cell towers could now add them to their structures. So, I think that's distinguishable and if I could, Scott wants to make a point back there too.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that, you know, a lot of these antennas existed before we changed some of our ordinances. So, I mean, there are a lot of antennas that are there already and the question was is when the change in the use of this building, is it acceptable to allow those antennas to remain? The developers proposed some alternatives to make them more stealth in manner. It's not unusual to have antennas on a high-rise building. I've lived in one. I mean, it's, it happens all the time in Chicago. I mean, they're, they're all over the place. There's no hazard that that's involved with that. FCC has obviously said that's okay because people live in those buildings. So, that, to me, is not really a true issue. Whether or not these are done for, you know, safety or for revenue for that, for the developer, that's a little bit different, but I think the intention that was written in our code was so that people couldn't have a single-family home and put a cell tower on their property. That was really the true intention behind that. One of the things that the Historic Preservation Agency did, the state one, said was, you know, the first option they said, when they said they didn't like the antennas on the building, was to put up a monopole on the property somewhere, which thought that was not really the best alternative to put, you know, a monopole when you have a perfectly good structure that could accommodate them in some stealth fashion, as opposed to putting up a monopole now that's, you know, closer to the homes or wherever that are nearby. So, that was the option. We didn't think that was a good solution.
But I guess we're going back to the point of it's a variance. It can be grandfathered, or you can say it's grandfathered, but it's still, there's an application for whether or not we're going to vary from that. And you go back to the wireless, the wireless communication facilities for our zoning code and the first point is, A, to establish uniform standards, procedures to manage the development, sitting, installation and operation of WFC, WCFs in compliance with the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996. Does that state that you're not allowed to have towers on residential facilities?
Does the Federal Communications Act say that? No.
No, I'm asking if it does. So, when we banned towers on residential, and I'll quibble with your point that it says the purpose was single, but it states single and multifamily, so it doesn't make that distinction, so I don't think we should. Why did we then say, "No, we didn't want them on?"
On, well, I think-
On residential and buildings. Why did we want-
I think the intention, and I wasn't one of the writers of that, but I think the intention was not to allow people to have it on residential properties that, you know, single-family and maybe apartment buildings that are, you know, low-rise. I don't know that we really had a lot of high-rise buildings that were being addressed in that fashion. I mean, this is an unusual building, that it's, you know, 100 feet tall, that, you know, would lend itself to being a co-location site for antennas, which obviously is why it's been attractive.
But again, I don't want different definitions, low-rise, high-rise. It states single-family, multifamily.
Right. And I think, and I think the idea behind it was to make sure that we're covering ourselves for putting this as, and it's not a variance, it's a deviation from the code. I mean, there's a distinction, but you know, this is part of the plan development. So, that language is put in there specifically to allow for them to get the approval of that if the council wants to do so, and so that, you know, there's no question that that was granted for this building.
If this wasn't a plan development overlay, it would be a variance.
Correct.
And we're still trying to figure out, you know, we haven't approved the plan development overlay, so it's still kind of a variance at this point, or modification, or however we kind of want to call it.
You can see it from St. Charles, it's a mixed use. Are we okay with this?
Right.
So, I guess, to your point, are we okay with this? Could you be okay with it? Could you be okay with it? Because it's a, because it's a mixed use.
I'm wondering what the reason for, for a variance or modification would be.
To make the project financially feasible for a developer who's put a proposal in front of us. That's what we're voting on.
Correct.
Or-
And I would say no in that circumstance.
And if we vote no, will we allow them to apply to put a freestanding one up separately?
Whatever is allowable.
I like the stealth option better, that's why I bring it up.
I know.
So, how do we go down this list and actually make headway?
We could go through each one of the modifications there and say whether or not we want it or whether we would vote yes or no for it. And we could do that, we could go through each one of them.
Straw poll, we're just advising ourselves about. We've gotten to this before, we're not making votes tonight. And I'm buying.
Well, at some point, we would make a resolution to send it to the city council.
Right.
With-
Right.
Potential amendments.
Have to rewrite it with these changes.
Right.
You know, my only fear is that we don't have, to me, enough of the representative here to shit, to really shed light on what we're going to tell staff to change in the ordinance or modify from what's already there.
Well, that's why it's great that it's, that's why it's great it's going to city council where they will have an opportunity to-
Right. And I think to, in my mind, there's a couple of sticking points here. There, one is parking, one is the stormwater because it's tied to the parking. Marty's point about the cell tower, I guess what I'd say about the cell tower is, you know, we have one that's out in the development that we've already approved two different times, hasn't been built yet, but there's a cell tower out there that the property owner and the developers that have come forward with plans for it will not give up because of the income stream on it. I mean, think of, I know most of you weren't here, but we went through this with our water towers where we added little railings on the water towers and we're making good money off of it because we've got cell towers.
Yep.
Transmitters all over them, receivers all over them.
So, how do we do a straw poll, a straw poll? Do we just say who's adamantly against the cell tower?
Right.
And go from there? If it's majority, that's a problem. If it's not, we move on, strike it. Do that with parking, do that with detention area. Any other items down there that somebody would like to bring forward?
We can, we can go through them one at a time or we can take the ones we've got. You want to go through each one of the modifications then? I mean, I can go right off of here. We can go through the regarding minimum setback, parking from streets to allow less than the required 10-foot setback for parking spaces in the south parking lot to accommodate the dedication right of way for Fabian Parkway as required by KDOT. Did anybody have a problem with that? That's, to me, a no-brainer on this because that's, one of the things we want is we want that space so that KDOT can do something different with the intersection. The next one would be zoning code, section 205, 5A, regarding land use mix to allow approximately 18% of the first floor space in the existing building adjacent to streets to be used for retail, entertainment or eating or drinking land uses rather than the required Anybody have problems with that? Moving on to number three, zoning code regarding transparency to allow less than the required amount of vision glass in the walls existing in the, of the existing building facing public streets in accordance with the HPC's action on the application of certificate for appropriateness for the building elevations. Does everybody understand that one?
I understand the point is for retail, but again, I have a massive problem with people not having-
Use the mic so we can, everybody can hear it.
I understand that that was meant for retail, but I still have a massive problem with people not having a view other than, "Oh, it's light outside," or "It's dark outside." So, I understand the intent.
It's more for showcasing though?
No, I get it. The antenna's for retail, I get that. But again, this is where we're restricting ourselves in that building because we decided to make it historical and it's not usable.
I tend to agree. I mean, to me, this is, again, if we are, we are forced into this because of the historic qualification, this is not something we would want to see in any other building. So, I do kind of have a problem with this one. I don't think we should allow that to have the glass block and it's two foot below seating sightline qualify as vision glass according to our code.
That's a period in a sentence, that's the end of this project.
Yeah. I see that as any other building with residential, would we want that?
That's what we're talking about, this is a, this is the Campana building, either we want to save it or we don't.
Right. I get that.
The reason that I have an issue with it, it goes to these issues regarding to when we're making the determinations for self, health and safety issues.
Yep.
Those, those low windows are being screened by hedges. So, when we're talking about being able to see out, you're really only seeing into the hedge row anyways. You're not able to see the lawn. And that was, I believe Chipo was saying, to preserve the integrity of the building. But my prior career in law enforcement and insurance is you never block your windows where it can conceal criminal activity, where somebody could break into a window on the first floor, because nobody can see. Your, your, your insurance company tells you, "Clear your bushes away from your windows so everybody can see what's going on." And that's where we're making the distinction of, for a health and safety issue, blocking windows to make a historic- windows, to make a historical building look historic. At some point, the natural, the natural friction between this being a historical building and a residential building has to come to a head. It's either a historic building where some people live, or it's a residential building that's historic. That sets the tone for how we're deciding these decisions.
So, who is this a deal killer for?
I think some of these, some of these questions are determinative of whether the project can move forward or not, so if glass block is not acceptable in a residential use is what I'm hearing from several people, that might be a bridge that we have to cross to determine whether the project can move forward at all.
That's why I'm asking, how many people, is that a deal killer for?
I mean, it's-
Raise your hand.
Well, I didn't understand the, the safety that you were talking about, I never knew that, you have background that I didn't have, but I was looking at it from the health aspect of, again, it, it's, um, it's prison-like, you can't see outside. It's, that's, that's, that's a health issue. It's a health issue. There's problems with buildings that go under construction where they have to bring in additional lighting for the people because they're not getting enough natural light, they're not getting, not able to see outside, that's a problem. That's a health problem, in my opinion. Maybe there's a study out there that says I'm wrong, but it feels like a health problem.
There's an additional part of this, is, we know that they're saying the facade must be maintained, but is there any variance process for them to make any concessions on that?
Can I just clarify, by them, you mean the National Park Service?
Yes, and SHPO and all of the entities that are saying the glass block has to be preserved. Where are the variances for them to say, look, if you don't allow us some glass on the front for vision, for people to live in, this building goes away? Which is, the question would then be for the historic preservation, which is more important? The glass block, or the glass block in a pile when it's torn down? Because it can't be redone.
Can you, can you mess with those hedges?
I mean, the short answer is, um, there is no variance process for the SHPO and the National Park Service because we are using the federal historic tax credit as a resource to help pay for the cost of this project. And so, um, I think that, um-
And I understand-
In a pure historic review, there may be a process, but because they control whether the credits are approved or not, they have the final say, and there is no variance process.
But I, and when I say the variance process, I understand what you're talking about. What I mean is, is there any way that they would say, no, we're never giving you any money if you change anything whatsoever? Or do they have some flexibility to say, oh, if it's going to be able to save this building, the ultimate goal in what they're trying to do is to save the building, can they make some modifications which would still make it feasible, yet livable?
We have been negotiating with SHPO and ultimately with the National Park Service for almost full 18 months that we've been working with you on. If you have the plans that were initially submitted first to the city of Batavia, and then to IDA for our application, we had vertical windows, the same as we have in the back of the property, we had vertical windows on the east side of the building. And SHPO and the feds both said no to that. And so, that's their answer, and there is no appeal process for that if we want to use the historic tax credits.
So, are we making a decision for a tenant who hasn't even signed an application to live there yet? I personally don't think I'd want to live there, but it's possible somebody else would. It doesn't necessarily look like a prison to me. That is a little far.
Maybe it is a little far, you're right, maybe it is a little far, but it was just, when I was in there, when I toured the building myself, and I looked in there, I'm like, I cannot, yeah, and I certainly don't speak for everybody, but I cannot imagine being half my age, later in college or something, and being like, cool, there's a place I want to live.
Maybe you like the 16-foot ceilings, and you don't care about the window.
Can I make a comment? I, I don't have a problem with, with the windows. And I was just out of college and lived in a garden-level apartment that just had glass block. And I lived there because it was cheap, and I dealt with it. If I wanted to see outside, I went outside. So, you know, that, that, this to me, that's not a deal breaker. It's not. There's a lot of other issues here, but this to me is not one of Marty's issue about the windows and, you know, the low windows, that's an issue, that's, but the glass block for me, uh, that's not, that's not a deal breaker.
You know, I look at the windows issues and Marty's comment about that, we approve houses all the time that have low windows right down almost to the floor in housing developments all over the city. So, to use that as a justification for not approving this doesn't really work for me because we've allowed those type of windows or low windows that are all over the city.
I don't know any of them have been approved on a variance or a modification because of it. None of, nobody's come to us and said, I need to put low windows in, and you decide for me whether or not I can have it. That's never been the case. I mean, we're being asked to make changes to, if you know of another time-
Because that's part of the mixed development.
If I may, just very briefly, um, you know, part of the rationale for using the plan development mechanism here as opposed to just going for a series of variances, is there is a provision in the zoning code that talks about whether a property is either unique or mixed use. And so, certainly in my view, this property meets both of those definitions. There are no other Campana buildings anywhere in Batavia, or really anywhere. And so, I hear your concern about establishing precedent by looking at these variances, but because this property is such a white elephant, we've called it a white elephant before, um, I, I think that the decisions that you're looking at really cannot be used to set precedent for other kinds of decisions. There's nothing else like it, there's no other condition like this anywhere in the city.
So, do we want to leave that alone until we can all vote on it and make that decision? Because I mean, I'm looking at, at three that have a problem with it.
Other eight that have a problem with it.
Right.
It's a straw poll.
Nobody means come Monday. Would the other five be with it, is that what you meant?
Six, yeah.
Right. As of today, there's three people.
Right.
So-
So, are five votes going to flip between now and then? I know Susan.
Mike, do you have a view, a view on that?
All right, there, that's, okay, what's the next one?
Okay, the next one would be zoning code regarding building entrances to allow less than the required number of entrances facing public streets in accordance with the HPC Commission's action on the applications for COA on the building elevations. Facing Batavia Avenue, three entrances are provided where 13 would be required. Facing Batavia, Fabian Parkway, one entrance provided where two would be required. Again, I think this speaks directly to the facade of the building and the restrictions from historic preservation on it.
Yep. Any problems?
No problems, we'll move on to the next one. Zoning code, section regarding parking field landscape separation, allow more than 20 spaces without requiring the installation of 20-foot landscape separation. Parking lot design in the back.
That's the parking lot in the front, correct?
That issue is actually the parking lot in the back, um, and it's the little landscape buffers between little groups of parking. The code requires those little buffers to be 20 feet wide. In our plan, they're only the width of one parking space, so about eight and a half, nine feet wide.
And not being put up with table?
Correct. I can show you the plan if you want.
And the reason for that was for you to maximize parking?
Get to the 301, correct.
Cut down an impervious space.
No, the reason for us to do it is cut down impervious, the reason that he wants the variances to get to the 301. No other way to 301 without that.
I think that's probably a fair statement.
Anybody else have any issues with it?
Okay, we'll move on to the next one, which is zoning code section regarding parking setback and landscape arterial street setback overlay district to accommodate the existing conditions in the south parking area, i.e. less than 50-foot parking setback from lack of landscaping resulting from the dedication of the right-of-way to Fabian Parkway by KDOT. Do we have an issue with that? Pretty self-explanatory that they have the right-of-way, we can't do that. Okay, moving on to, the next one is regarding parking supply to allow approximately 206 parking spaces to be constructed on the subject park property before occupancy of any residence provided, land sufficient to construct, strip additional parking spaces by land bank to provide a minimum of 301 on the subject property. That's the one that, I think I see everybody pretty much nodding that we want the 300 parking spaces up front. We don't want to have to come back with another plan someday later and fight for it, so we want that as a condition. So, we'd want this one modified and changed to include the full parking plan, which includes the stormwater detention.
Do you want to reply to that while you're here up front?
No. I mean, honestly, we have to, we have to study it. We have to, um, we have to take a look at project feasibility as a result of this decision. So, um, we will go back and do some engineering, and, you know, we'll, we'll consult with our engineers, we'll consult with our architect, we'll consult with our contractor, and I need to come back and, I guess, provide, you know, some thoughts on that.
You wouldn't immediately say no?
I can't. I mean, what, you know, if I say no, then it sounds like we're done here, right?
The reason I'm asking is, this can't be the first time you've thought about that number.
Well, again, we've been thinking about that number for 18 months, right? We came in at 146 parking spaces. We have, through commentary from this body, from city staff and others, increased that number to 206. We even heard from opponents who hired a parking and traffic engineer, and they took issue with a lot of the aspects of our project, but one of the things that they essentially agreed with our traffic engineer on was that 206 was adequate for the number of parking sp, for the number of, for the uses that this project generates. And so, you know, we can, you can go back into the testimony from the plan commission, that's what they said. So, I don't have a good answer for you on that this evening.
But I think that, for me, that goes back to speaking about the, if I know that it's 306 and you come back to us with, here's the plan to get us to there, because we should be planning for the eventuality of 301 anyways, because that's what the whole land bank approval is. We're saying it's 301, we're just saying not right now. So, I don't think that it's ever changed from 301 or to 206, and that was it, 206, never, never to change, because the land banking is prefaced on the fact that it's going to, at some point, and we don't have crystal balls to know when that's going to be, we want to be able to make that determination and plan for it now.
I think there's a little bit of a distinction in that there is a parking study that shows the number of parking spaces that will be needed. The land bank parking is, in the event that that is not correct, so it's not that, it is a certainty that in the future the land bank parking will need to be created, built, and the drainage put in for it, it's that they're banking it because in the eventuality that more parking is needed than both his study and the independent study indicate, then they do have the land available to do that.
I'm not good with that, but how do we determine if more is needed? Who will determine that? That is what-
The condition that's in the ordinance is that staff gets to decide that. If we find that there's a parking issue, we would then go back to the developer and say, guess what, you got to build a parking. It would be totally discretionary the way the condition is written.
Good, I'm good with that.
I can bend on that. The reason I say that you drive up and down Randall Road, there are a handful of parking lots that are maybe a little bit too big in some cases, and there are some places where the parking lot could maybe use a second deck. I trust staff to help us make that.
Right. And I fully, I agree with that fully, that there are spaces out there when we're talking about Randall Road, but those are shopping centers where people can go, oh, I don't have enough parking, I'll come back. This is where people live, they can't drive around until parking becomes available, or they go back and go shopping later. That's why this is a, this is more important than a Randall Road vacant, you know, empty lot of a lot of spaces. This is where people have to live.
Let's say 200 people do move in, according to their estimate of 195, and every one of them has a car. This parking plan would technically accommodate that. Now, depending upon if that highest and best use of the commercial property is a mattress store, or whatever commercial uses are in there, how much additional parking do you need for that? Maybe the 200 number is not that far off with options to jump to a land bank. And again, I would trust staff on it.
And that's where I'm going with trying to plan these things in head, that the mattress store moves out, and you've got something that has a lot of traffic. We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be basing on the lowest common denominator, but the worst-case scenario.
So, my question, if you're not sure if it's economically feasible now, how would you know if it's economically feasible in the future? So, it's still the same calculation, in fact, it'll probably cost you more because now you got to move a tot lot, and there's a bunch of things you would have to do later, and the cost is going to go up as time goes on, just like everything does. So, I don't understand why you wouldn't know now whether or not you could afford it.
Because it's coming from a set of capital sources that we have available to us now versus coming from an operating property. And that's the fundamental distinction, is that there is cash flow coming off of a property that we don't have available to us at this point.
But you also said in the last meeting that you would run the property at a loss if need be, so you'd be in a position that you wouldn't actually have the revenue then to add other things, at least that's, I mean-
Well, again, the mechanism that, that staff has proposed for this creates an obligation on our behalf, and we will be signing an obligation on behalf of our position as property owners. As Frank has noted, we do have the resources to do it, but it is a question of whether it makes sense to do that now based on what we've heard from two different traffic engineers.
And I would like to chime in on that too, because we do have two parking studies that say 206 spaces is adequate. So, I don't, I don't know, to me, it's like being- And we have a backup plan. Yeah, we have a backup plan. I think it's fine for me, but, I mean, that's what we're doing, we're seeing how many people have a, have a problem.
I agree with that. Feasible that this addresses the matter.
The only thing that I don't know is, will it be, again, will the plan of a pond in the front be acceptable? So, I need to know that, because if they say it's not, then that's going to raise your cost even more. Looking out for you, I guess, I mean, your costs are just going to go up.
I appreciate that. Fair point, and we will check with the Historic Preservation Office. We also heard you don't like the location we showed for the soccer field, we will look at that again. You know, it's funny, it's a 12-acre site, all right, plenty of land, there's, there's all kinds of space there. But, given what's, what's required to do it, actually, there are, there are kind of few places that we have to put something like a soccer field. So, we will go back and, and look at that issue again, but I don't know what the historic people will say. I suspect they will say, because it is far away from the building and the contours of the land that are being modified are pretty subtle, they're not going to have a problem with it, but I'll confirm that.
Thank you. Does it have to be a soccer field? Could it be a passive park? All 30 of these kids playing soccer with each other every day?
I mean, you know, we, we offered the amenities, so to go to the, the question about amenities, we, we have offered these soccer field and a tot lot as amenities for the project. You know, we can revisit whether those are the- You know, we can revisit whether those are the right amenities. We happen to think that they make sense. It's, it's interesting that in Aurora, at this old hospital, actually District 131 was using a big portion of that three-acre site for a soccer field for their kids. So, you know, we're, we're happy to work with the local community to, to do that kind of thing, and we extended, once we took ownership of that, we said we'd like to work with you again to, to do that. Now, they, I think, found other arrangements, but, you know, it, it seemed like the most appropriate thing there, but we're willing to consider other amenities if they make sense.
Well, just, just to, I, I think the open space, the size of a soccer field is important in that area, because it is an island, you know? It's, you know, on, on that corner. So whether they're using it as a soccer field, or whether they're using it to, you know, play ultimate, or, you know, or whatever, it's, you know, the kids need, they need a place to run and stretch, you know, tot lot obviously is not going to work for, you know, kids that are a little older. You know, they need to be kids, so...
Okay, so do we want to change that? Do we want to leave it, knowing that we have a plan, or if we have approval from historic preservation on that?
How many people are against it as is?
I mean, I have better comfort with it, knowing that there is a plan for where the stormwater can go on the property.
I talked through that one, and I...
It just has, it just has to be approved. I mean, you make the point of that, Mark, that it has to be approved, and, you know, again, the costs go way up if you can't do that. Okay. Next one is regarding the amount of sign landscaping to waive the required landscaping for the sign to be erected on the Batavia Avenue frontage and to allow less than the required landscaping for the sign to be erected on Fabian Parkway frontage. Scott, can you answer this for me? Is that because of the right-of-way dedication and HPC on the front?
Right.
Okay. Does anybody have any problems with that one?
Is the word campaign going to stay on the top of the building? I think everyone will know that it's the campaign apartments. No pizzas are going to miss this plan.
Okay. Next one would be zoning code section regarding the Fabian Parkway Monument sign setback to allow the setback to be less than the required 10 feet from the right-of-way or private street. Anybody have a problem with that? Number 10, zoning code section regarding the building being a wireless communication facility support structure to allow the existing wireless communication facilities as described in Evergreen Real Estate Group's application for approval of the planned development overlay district to remain on the subject property in accordance with the approved certificate of appropriateness for building elevations. Anybody want to talk about their problems with this? This is hiding it on the facade, rather than separate pole on McHugh's building.
My assumption is if you set a separate pole, all the guy wires and everything, then all of a sudden, there's like no parking in the back, and, I mean, those things aren't just completely free steam.
I don't know how you would achieve that, plus, I'm sure the neighborhood would not be happy with 150-foot poles sticking up in the back of the property to get to the same height.
I prefer the south of the...
I, I prefer that they hide it on the building, too.
And it is, it is existing, which makes a difference to me.
And if somebody didn't tell you that there were antennas on there, unless you stop and look, you probably didn't notice. Okay, that's through the zoning code section. Do we want to go through the conditions tonight? There's only 21 of them. We can go through that. I got some water left.
Hey, we made some decisions tonight. Kind of.
Okay. First off, as site improvements, there'll be substantial in performance with the plan submitted by Everstate, Evergreen Real Estate Group dated 6/30/17, and the Chippewa revisions 8/11/17 is listed in the exhibits in this ordinance with a limit of 8 dwelling units. Okay with that? Number two, execution delivery and recording of declaration of covenants, conditions, restrictions, and easements to run with the land as to all subdivided parcels, which CCRE will be subject to reasonable approval of the city and that the entire parcel deemed consistent with one zoning lot under the city zoning code, and that the owner of the, any subdivided parcel shall not have the right to request or obtain any amendment to the planned development overlay zoning applicable to the zoning lot without the consent of all the other owners of the subdivided parcel. Questions? Okay. Yes?
So when it gets subdivided, how does that impact the detention calculations?
It shouldn't. We'll consider it one zoning lot for our purposes, so any modifications on one part will be reflective of everything on the property as a whole.
Any other questions? Next would be an approval of certificate of appropriateness for this subject property, and that would be the COA from our HPC. So we already have that. Dedication and right-of-way for Fabian Parkway is required by the King County Department of Transportation. Have they submitted the dedication?
That's on the plan.
It's part of the subdivision.
Okay, so part of subdivision. Dedication of right-of-way for Batavia Avenue, LMI Route 31, if required by the Department of Transportation, I.D.O.T.
That's shown on the plan also.
All right, it is shown on there. Do, do we know how much that's going to be?
27 feet.
27 feet? Okay. Any questions? Number six, Everstate, Evergreen Real Estate Group shall provide transportation for grade school children residing in the subject property to and from Western Avenue School for classes and special events where feasible. Such transportation is to be coordinated between Geneva School District 304 and Evergreen Real Estate unless waived in writing by the school district. I'm sure that was talked over with the school district, as far as their conditions on it. Construction of a sidewalk along the Fabian Parkway frontage of the subject property subject to approval by KDOT. Is that going to be all the way to Allen Drive?
They don't own all of it.
We don't have approval yet?
No, this is strictly on the property that we're looking at. So this is from the intersection of Route 31 up to our property line, which is the medical office property. It's actually the vacant lot east of the medical office property.
So can we, can we create additional language on there, subject to that sidewalk being extended all the way? I mean, obviously, another party has to be involved there.
Two other parties there. I believe there's two property owners to the west.
It depends, yeah. There's two different, there's two different circumstances. There's Fabian sidewalk, which would be in the Fabian Parkway right-of-way, so if KDOT require, KDOT approval would be required for that, but it's also going to be required for the sidewalk, they're putting it on their frontage. And then the second part would be if you were asking for a sidewalk along Allen Drive, that's the township. Townships already said that they would not approve that sidewalk.
This is a sidewalk in nowhere?
It would, it would end at Allen Drive pavement, so anybody walking there would then be walking down Allen Drive, but that's no different than the residents are doing now.
Okay. Number eight would be installation of north-south pedestrian crosswalk at the intersection of Fabian Parkway and Batavia Avenue, LMI Route 31, with pedestrian crossing signals per the plan submitted to the city by Evergreen and approval by KDOT. Okay with that? Periodic review of the parking adequacy on the subject property by city staff and further construction striping by Evergreen of additional parking spaces within 12 months upon the termination of city staff to the need of additional parking per the land bank parking plan. So this would be every 12 months that we would review this, or staff would review it?
No. Review would be continuous. If we find that there's a need for parking, then we would, you know, make that determination, they would have to construct...
Oh, they would have to construct it within 12 months of our review?
Yes.
So we could review it?
We got a complaint that, you know, there's too much...
Every three months if we had to.
Not enough parking, then, you know, we could make that determination, say, okay, from this point, you need to build additional parking.
And my understanding of this is that anytime we would propose a change in use for any of the commercial components, for example, if the mattress store went away and we were looking to put in another type of retail there, we'd need to go to the city for a permit, and that would trigger a review on the part of the city, so...
That was going to be one of my questions on, on that parking expansion.
How is that determined?
There is a certain number of spaces that are required per 1,000 square foot of space determined by the use. So for, for example, Jeff, did you want to chime in?
No, I mean, we're, we're saying that's what the zoning code already kind of states, but we're saying that we'll, we'll review it subject to changing conditions. What are the, how are we going to measure those changing conditions? I know somebody had said complaints, but if that's the case, there's going to be people complaining all the time just to make sure that it triggers a review. So what's the actual subjective complaints that could be measurable?
I think there's two different components to it. Whereas one, if the residential or just the existing commercial tenants have a problem with parking, then we'll, we'll get a complaint, or we'll note it, and we'll say, okay, now you need to trigger, we, we are triggering the requirement to build the additional parking. There's another that if the commercial use changes to a use that has a higher parking demand, for example, a restaurant, they are then going to have to provide a study and additional parking for just that use. So if it's, you know, if, if it's, you know, four spaces per thousand for one use, and it's, it's a restaurant, and then that requires, you know, 10 spaces per thousand, then, you know, they're going to have to then provide that additional parking somewhere else, otherwise that use can't locate there.
And beyond just the complaint, there would be an investigation of the complaint to determine its validity.
Any other questions on that one? Okay, number 10 is the waiver of objection by Evergreen Real Estate to proposal and establishment of a backup SSA for the territory comprising the subject property for the purpose of funding construction of additional parking facilities and associated improvements to comply with applicable city codes, including but not necessarily limited to stormwater management for the land bank parking areas designated by Evergreen Real Estate plans, and after a determination by city staff that such parking spaces are needed to serve the residents and commercial occupants of the property.
They're okay with an SSA?
Yeah, they're waiving objection to it.
They're waiving objection.
Yeah, I mean, it, to me, it seemed like a, a pretty creative mechanism that actually has some teeth to it.
Do you, do you have any properties that are, that have SSAs on them that have been enacted?
I don't think so.
And it wouldn't be automatic. That would be in the event that they didn't just decide to pay for the additional parking outright, as opposed to having it put into an SSA.
Right.
Anybody else? Okay. Number 11 is approval by staff of final site engineering plans to be submitted by Evergreen to staff as part of the building permit process. Number 12, approval of staff, city staff of the sign site and landscaping plan for a monument sign proposed by the Fabian Parkway frontage of the subject property to be submitted by Evergreen at the time of the building permit submittals, including but not limited to the review for aesthetic and safety purposes of visibility issues and the adequacy of landscaping. Approval by city staff of added tree species diversity to monoculture tree areas. No gaming licenses shall be permitted or issued for the subject property. Relocation of the existing wireless communication facilities on the building top of the existing building and construction of screening enclosure approved by city staff and the COA. That's already been designed and approved by historic HPC, correct? Land cash contributions per city subdivision regulations. You knew that one was coming.
We had an opportunity to revise that and didn't.
Subject to city staff approval, Evergreen Real Estate shall construct sidewalks along the outer edges of the parking spaces in the East Oval to connect Batavia Avenue sidewalk with the sidewalks near the east side of the building.
Do you have approval on that from the state?
I believe so. I need to check back with my historic consultant, but I know we've talked to them, and they understood that since it was a city requirement that they can, you know, get their heads there, so, yeah.
That is the sidewalk that connects basically parking spaces around the racetrack or the oval up front. Okay. Subject to historic preservation approvals and city staff approval with construction of the land bank parking, Evergreen Real Estate shall replace the displaced tot lot and/or soccer field with other outdoor amenities. So I guess that's what we were already talking about. We're going to be okay with that at this point. Subject to the historic preservation approvals and city staff approval, Evergreen Real Estate shall add a minimum of two benches east of the building and a minimum of one bench east, one bench adjacent to the tot lot and soccer field area, along with trash receptacles in each location. Subject to historic preservation approvals and city staff approval, Evergreen Real Estate shall construct a vehicle loading area near the building's main entrance. We talked about that in the earlier meeting.
So that was, is that included in your, does that change your square footage of...
It's included, and it's, it was part of the redesign with the sidewalk around the oval, so it's included in that 23,000.
Okay. Subject to KDOT approval and city staff approval, Evergreen Real Estate shall install signs prohibiting left-hand turns during peak morning traffic period onto Fabian Parkway.
So some of this goes back to what the mayor was talking about before with KDOT, that that's, probably needs to be modified based on what KDOT comes back with on their study.
Right. And that's one of the things I want to know before I say yes to it, is what is KDOT really approving in and out on Fabian Parkway? Well, and I think, too, five years from now, if they redo the intersection, those are going to change.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It would turn in, as I said before, this, if they improve that intersection to look like Fabian and Randall, then there's no left out, no left in, no left out. That's, I mean, look at that intersection. So that, again, forces everybody to turn right and changes traffic flows dramatically. That's one of the issues I have. It's going to be huge, and we can't, yes, we can't predict the future, but that's kind of what we're here for, is to prevent problems from happening in the future.
Right, and that's why I think if, when this gets built now, if they do right in, right out, then it's already a learned experience as they go in and out of it, no matter where the entrances are on the property, if they change them for stacking for right-hand-only lane that may be on 31...
But I would do right in, right out on 31.
And just because it's expanded doesn't mean that all of the approaching lanes have to be expanded.
They're, one of the proposals by KDOT is two left-hand turns in every direction, and that would most certainly block a left out and a left in at, at the 31 entrance. And I think that this needs to be considered, that this would be a right in, right out. That's, that's going to cause a tremendous amount of traffic now going on that interior road, creating more opportunities for accidents on the interior, because now everybody's circling around the, the racetrack to go out to the other side, and it's, it'll change the dynamic of that property a lot, and it'll change the traffic flow on that property a lot, and it'll change the traffic flow in, on Allen Drive.
That's true if this is a Starbucks, though, too. It doesn't, it doesn't matter what they use.
I said before, I don't, I don't know that there is a good use for the property. That's the biggest problem.
And I look and kind of compare it in some ways to what Homestead is like. When that right in, right out went in on that side, on the south side of Fabian, that changed the dynamics of how you use that property and how you drive in and out of it. So, you know, they learned how to use it, we all use it, and it hasn't been a problem.
It stinks, and we're handcuffed by KDOT. We can't make any decisions regarding it, that's the problem.
We can put pressure on them, and we can add, and we can keep...
Put same thing tight.
Great resource for that.
We did it with a gas station under it, so...
Alan, when I talked to the county about that a couple of weeks ago, they said that they would take a look at it, but there's a lot to look at, was the word they used, because there's a lot of moving parts to that whole...
Right, and I don't see them putting, to me, the money in the timeframe and, or the time into that until they're ready to do something with it. And to me, that's five years away before they really are ready to do something with that intersection. Okay, that has gotten us to...
May I just ask for clarification on that one, that there is no modification? May I just ask for clarification on that one, that there is no modification required to 21 as written?
I don't think we have an answer on that. We have to wait to see what KDOT comes back with. That's my understanding.
So it's worded subject to KDOT approval.
But if it says subject to KDOT approval, so if KDOT says it's right in, right out, a left-hand turn sign doesn't matter.
Well, subject to KDOT approval for putting up a sign that says, don't turn left during peak hours, not, we don't know what they're going to say. They could say, nope, needs to be, we want it to be right in, right out. We don't know what they're going to say.
Right. And then this would be mute. We wouldn't have to worry about it.
So I'm hearing no modification unless KDOT requires a modification to it.
Okay.
Is that what you mean?
Sure.
Okay, now that we have come to the end of that, can we go back and go through your list? Because I saw you were writing the list of them.
Oh, no, I've just taken down where, where we were kind of at with it. I think we're.
So if staff has those, that gets us to our next meeting? And then do we want to listen to anybody that hasn't spoken on the subject?
I think so.
So I've got a list here. All right. We'll start off.
Please take a, like, three-minute break?
What?
Yeah.
Sure.
Or I'll just walk away for three minutes.
And mention the limit.
Let's take, let's take a three-minute break so that we can get some water. Everybody can head out for just a second. We'll come back and, and start up again. And we're going to go through the list, as best as I could tell, of who has not talked yet, I will allow, because I think there's, you want to go three minutes tonight since it's already after 10 o'clock? Where's my timer? I'll be right back. Yeah, I gotta get some water. Okay.
And then what I hear is that they change to a yes.
So you were at one of the plan commission meetings.
With protections that are in place that would allow staff to tell them.
The first hand, there's already one. Twice. So I kind of want to say. Number one, and I don't know.
The only problem.
Everybody else. He said he spoke to plan commission meetings. Here. Just go ahead and let everybody, even though there's at least two that have spoken.
Elliot, that's fine.
Should I make a nice legion of the ones or just? We're going to go three minutes instead of five, or we're never going to get three minutes.
I asked him to take a review.
On the, on the modification of the first list.
We're just talking about Fabian Parkway.
What I'm concerned about is my residents, my incumbent residents.
Right. But we're going to leave it alone.
Make a left-hand turn.
And then we, as is, right.
Campana, same driveway, and they're, they're driving, they have to, they have to drive in front of these people.
Right.
Because they're making a left-hand turn.
I gotta go grab some water.
Well, I mean, the Homestead is, they're not, well, I mean, I wouldn't be there. I mean, you know, what's going on here? Because they're sitting there with a, basically a restricted access and we're letting Campana go any damn way they want to go.
So you asked KDOT to look at how that whole, I mean, the functions like, I mean, those two avenues are right.
Right.
Right now, the way the condition is left out.
Right.
What about Homestead?
They, they. No, they, they're the ones that are restricted. They're right in.
Don't know.
They're right in.
I walked out with a.
Well, yes, they was, you know, if you're going west, Fabian, you make a left turn off of Fabian.
Right. She just left, right?
Yeah, well, she was with her husband on.
You're coming out of there, you came, you have to turn.
Everything okay?
It says a sign right there.
So how long?
I mean, I talked to them. Well, I mean, I think they're like, what the hell do we do with this? You know? I mean, I'm not saying that criticism, but it's a hard question to.
It's in trouble.
Tom, Tom.
All right, so.
Tom Rickert.
Do you want a minute? Well, I'll tell them, I'll tell them they've got a minute.
Carol's the engineer and I think Tom's now the director.
So.
You can call Tom if you want. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take a seat again. We're going to start the meeting.
You're, you're there alone.
Yeah. I'm not surprised if he's going seven.
Wouldn't if I were you. Say, I wouldn't if I were you.
Okay, I'm going to do my best memory act here to try to remember who spoke before and who hasn't. We'll start off, number two here is Jenna Dempsey. And then up next would be Gordon Rowley.
There's three minutes?
And it's three minutes, we're going to go with three minutes tonight because we're starting after 10 o'clock. So you'll have three minutes. Scott will be timing and he will tell you when you have one minute left.
And then I'll.
And then cut you off.
And then I'll let you know when it's, when you're done.
Am I okay?
Okay, go ahead.
I'm Jenna Dempsey. I was hoping I could just swap spots with Samantha Maleski. I'll give her my spot, hers, if that's all right.
That's fine. I just need you to afterwards come up and sign in.
I did. I'm on the list.
Okay, we're, okay.
And also, I prepared a five-minute statement because that's what you voted on. So I'm going to go ahead and, that's what you voted on last week.
And we also said that we could change that at any time, so.
Okay. I have two things I want to talk about. The first one is brief. On February 18th, I submitted a FOIA request related to Campana, to IDA. IDA is the agency that Evergreen applied to for low-income housing tax credits. I've submitted other FOIA requests in the past for this development and the requests have been granted. After I submitted a request last week, I received a letter stating that my request is denied because the revised application is currently under review and has not yet been approved or denied. Evergreen's application for this project to receive their financing had previously been approved. So my question, just generally speaking to you guys and the applicant, and especially in light of what's going on with the One Washington Place and a funding issue, is what has happened with Evergreen's application to fund this project and why is it no longer approved? I have a copy of the letter that I received from them. Moving on to the next point, my second item is to talk about the KLA traffic study, which is directly relevant to something you guys keep quoting. You keep talking about this 206 number and its agreement. And I know yesterday, KLA sent all of you a letter and the mayor disputing that fact. And so I'd like you guys to refer to that letter and see how he has corrected the way the City of Batavia has characterized that. KLA was a traffic engineering firm hired by the residents who lived near Campana to review the Erickson traffic study. Javier Milan at KLA presented his findings to the planning commission on August 2nd. In the City of Batavia's 81117 staff report, the following statement was included in the report. This is a report by the City of Batavia. Mr. Milan stated that he agrees with much of ERG's findings and went further to say that KLA agreed with the proposed 206 parking spaces and would be sufficient for the proposed uses. This is not what the KLA statement said or determined specifically in regards to the parking situation. Mr. Milan stated, and this can be viewed on the tape of his presentation, that he agreed with Erickson's parking findings and immediately followed that statement and qualified it with a however.
One minute.
And went on to discuss that commercial users of the West End businesses appear to park in the medical lot. He recommended that Erickson perform a three-day parking study to determine the actual demand and not rely on industry-standard parking. In response to the 81117 staff report and the way the City of Batavia characterized KLA's report and took his parking statement out of context, on August 15th, Javier Milan sent Joel Strassman an email, excuse me, emphasizing the ways that KLA does not agree with Erickson's study. This email was never included in the public record. Mr. Milan reviewed the City of Batavia staff minutes and reports. And in response to those reports and how the City of Batavia characterized KLA's findings, Mr. Milan wrote a letter this week to the Batavia City Council and the mayor. I'll try to be brief. Mr. Milan was troubled by what he read in the city reports. He said to me, quote, "I have never seen anything like this." He went on to say, "It would be unprofessional to say these things in the city in a letter." But he said there was an appearance of the city attempting to rid itself of responsibility when it came to addressing the safety of this intersection. He went on to say that.
Ma'am, it's time.
This is directly relevant to what you guys are talking about.
We can stop public comment right now if you're going to have outbursts. I will stop the meeting and we'll be done. If somebody else wants to give up the time to let her finish what she's prepared, we're more than happy to do that. If you don't want to follow the rules, we'll stop public testimony right now.
Could I make a point of order? She, she did give up her time because.
No, she swapped.
Oh, she swapped. Sorry.
But this is directly relevant, though. You guys are saying.
He said, she said she would give up her time.
Would you give up her time then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. And your name was?
Erin Easlestraugh.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
He said that when it came to addressing safety uses at this intersection, he went on to say it most certainly is routine for a city to require a developer to make traffic improvements as a condition of approval, even if they were outside the permitting process or those outside their jurisdiction. I'm frustrated and I know you guys have a difficult job as elected officials and I appreciate all the time you've spent reviewing the large amount of information that relates to this project. But I just want to say that we as residents matter and the safety issues related to intersections should not be dismissed. Now on to the content of KLA's recent letter to the city council and mayor. I'm not going to go into the technical details of the letter. It was all sent to you, so you have them. I hope you guys look at them and take them into consideration. It says, "Dear Mayor and City Council members," it goes on to say, again, I'm not going to go into the technical details. "Based on a review of the planning commission minutes, it appears we gave the impression that KLA was in total agreement with the findings of the traffic study prepared by Erickson. However, while we stated that we are in general agreement with the methodology of the study, numerous issues and faults were found with the analysis and were not taken into account or revised. KLA respectfully requests that you take into account the deficiencies found in the traffic study and proposed plan and various mitigation members identified and recommended in order to ensure the safety of the project and that of the motorist public and residents of Batavia. KLA prepared a memorandum dated August 1st and documented and reviewed our findings. KLA also attended the planning commission meeting and presenting our findings. While we did state we generally agree with the preparation of the traffic and parking study, we further stated and discussed that there were various technical errors that will have an impact on the results and findings of the traffic study and parking, that these errors should be addressed and rectified before proceeding further. KLA also sent an email to Joel Strassman on August 15th that, to the best of our knowledge, was never included in the public record." Excuse me. "All these technical errors will have an.
One minute.
On the results and the capacity analysis and the findings of the study that need to be considered before any decisions are made. While we understand the City of Batavia does not have jurisdiction over the access drives on Fabian Parkway and 31, the safety of the motorists in the area and the City of Batavia residents should be paramount. The city could work together with the developer, IDOT and KDOT, to address these concerns and assure the appropriate safety measures are implemented. KLA also reviewed a parking study prepared by Erickson. And while the proposed number of parking spaces for the residential development seemed to be adequate to meet the projected demand based on national surveys, we have concerns with the amount of parking provided for the commercial portion of the development. Land use is currently on-site, constantly change activities due to the volleyball nature of the times and the sports rehab facility.
Ten seconds.
Attendance and parking demand cannot be determined in a single survey. Field observations conducted by residents in the area at various times have indicated the parking demand of these facilities exceeds the number of parking spaces provided adjacent to them. Vehicles have been observed.
It's time.
In the parking lots served in the 725 baby and medical office. Again, I just respectfully ask that you review your email. Maybe you guys missed it. Thank you."
Next up would be Gordon Rowley.
Good evening. I'm Gordon Rowley. I reside at 700 West Fabian Parkway, Unit 25B. And I just wanted to comment that prior to returning to the Chicago area and specifically to Batavia for our senior years, about two and a half years ago, I served almost six years as chairman of the Plan Commission for a town in Door County, Wisconsin. The experience during those years revealed time and time again how the devil is often in the detail when dealing with planning issues related to shoreline zoning, preservation of natural resources, traffic issues, and most recently, affordable, livable housing for a large seasonal workforce. I'm revising some of my comments just a little bit because of the discussion you all have had this evening already on, on these very specific points. But rather than speak to some of the larger issues, I wanted to jump to a detail as a reminder how important the details really are. This has to do particularly with the land-banked area for parking and the meager outdoor amenities that are being provided and how those might possibly be relocated. Fortunately, in response to your last meeting, the future sites of possible relocation were shown on the site plan. I think those should become a permanent part of the site plan so that it's clear just as you can identify land-banked area, you can see future site for a correspondence. However, in Condition Number 18 and somewhat also in 19 and 20, Condition 18 particularly states that, here's my revision, Condition 18 reads in part, and I quote.
One minute.
"With construction of land bank parking, Evergreen shall replace the displaced tot lot and/or soccer field with other outdoor amenities." You have just given away the store folks. What are the other outdoor amenities that are equivalent to a soccer field or a tot lot that will fit? If there are objections to relocating something as large as a soccer field, will it shrink to a concrete pad and a baseball basketball hoop? That's an outdoor amenity. I think that this condition is extremely vague and really should be reconsidered, adding more specificity. But one other requirement is also introduced.
That's.
In Condition 18, and that's the approval of preservation. And similarly with 19 and 20, which deal with the addition of benches, as few as three,
and. It's time, sir.
Trash receptacles and a loading area in front of the main entrance of the building.
Sir, your time is up.
All right, thank you.
Next up would be George Boltman.
Who's up after that?
Emily Erickson is next. Good evening. My name is George Boltman. I'm actually resident of Geneva, but as a longtime, like, several years resident here of the Fox Valley, you know, tricet area, I don't really speak for just myself, I think, but a lot of other people who I've spoken with that either can't be here tonight or wouldn't, you know, come out publicly. I think that we have a lot of concerns overall about the development of this area. You know, I've been in the building and it, it seems to me that from the beginning, while it is a building that is historic and a lot of people want to see revamped and, you know, brought back to maybe what it can be, it seems that it's a stretch to see it as a, as a residential building of some density. Even though I think a lot of us, we all want to help others in maybe less fortunate situations and have affordable housing, just because we can make something into a residential building, I don't think makes it absolutely fit to be so. I mean, it seems like a very old building. Someone said prison-like earlier. Someone said it's a stretch. I don't know. You know, inside, I think, lack of windows and somebody mentioned the heating situation that you would have. I think that putting it, if we're going to have something in the community which is to benefit others, I don't think that, some of the questions have been answered that would really put this in a good, livable situation, in my opinion. And, I mean, if you look at something like, let's say, one instance, something as the most efficient way to heat, you say would be a heat pump. Well, from an engineer's point of view, whoop down past 37 degrees, they would run basically all day long in order to heat the inside of one of those units. You're going to see the cost for heating skyrocket for people who can't afford it, unless you have extra heating quills. Just, just to double. Just to double it being in the details, as the gentleman before me said, you need to look at things like that. And I think from the point of view of
One minute.
...the community and the school district, I think we've seen other instances where you have concentrated affordable housing. If this development really is trying to benefit these communities, these tri-city areas, it seems to be a problem with a lot of people that it seems comes with a big, pre-baked plan to serve the housing authority of Aurora and the Chicago areas rather than this specific area. And if I'm wrong on that, I'd love to be corrected. So, in instance to that, I think you need to take into account also, when you do have affordable housing, that's a wonderful thing. When you do have affordable housing, I think clustered and concentrated in one instance like this, you really need to take into account the effect of the housing values in the area. I know there's been studies cited, but really none of those that I've read really took into account the suburban areas that we live in here.
Time.
And all in all, I think that we need to consider those things and really answer more questions before this could really be a viable project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan, if I could mention that if people have prepared statements, that they're coming up and reading, that they can provide that statement to the recording secretary and only be made part of the record.
Next up is Emily Erickson.
I'm gonna give my time off to this woman. I'm on the street before.
Okay, that's gonna be Erin Isalevstro.
My concern is about the school system. You know, our, the high school is already jam-packed. Our police department, we have like 10, 15 police total in the Geneva Police Department. When we had the gun scare, they don't have the metal detector ones. We don't have metal detectors. I mean, this is gonna be bringing in so much more. And I know that you say, yeah, you could take the kids out of the projects, but you can't take the projects out of the kids. I have cousins, I have relatives that live down there, and they don't care. They're gonna do whatever they want. And your friend's dad is living out of the car, so this kid's just gonna stay with me. This other kid's just gonna stay with me. You know, so then you have like more than just your family members, and then you're sending them to the schools. What are you gonna do to prevent that? How are you going to up the police protection, up the security guards in the schools, help keep the kids that are there safe? That's it.
Okay, next would be Jacob Savransky. Is that right? And then after that would be Patty Lackman.
I did email everyone on the board with this information, but then again, I would like to maybe pass this around real quick. I had a five-minute statement, it's only, I'll cut it down to three minutes.
If you could start the clock now, I guess I'll try to get it all in. I would just like to start right off the bat with questioning the veracity of any studies that were done to assess the overall socioeconomic impact of this whole development. I submitted to you a study that was done, 2015, Stanford School of Graduate Business, 125 counties, thousands of developments, multiple states, including Illinois. Here are the highlights. Low-income housing developments in higher-income areas drop property values by 2.5% and attract lower-income households. Building low-income household, or low-income housing in high-income areas leads to a net loss of $17 million over a set period of time. When is low-income housing ideal? It's in communities that are already high in need and low income themselves because then it boosts property values. So Batavia doesn't fit that match. Now, this is the most interesting part. Low-income developments would have to house roughly 1,300 children for the benefits of the tenant to outweigh the costs of the society, taxpayers included. Given the average development has 82 apartments, I find it funny that this one's 80, the average. It is impossible for 1,300 children to be raised in these homes in order for us to benefit and get our money's worth. I know money is insensitive when it comes to this, so here's the sensitive part. I've been a firefighter, paramedic my whole life. I was raised, one of six kids, by a single mother. I know what affordable is, and I know how hard it is, and I'm not insensitive. My sister lost her lung in a car wreck when she was 14, still hasn't recovered to this day. You wanna know a great statistic that nobody read here? Motor vehicle crashes are the leading cause of death of children in every age bracket, every age bracket, dead kids. Two weeks ago, I took care of a 12-year-old that got run over by a truck. All right? Nobody's really addressed the true, not white elephant, but the 400-pound gorilla. It's not safe. I live off of 31. My residential street is not 45 miles an hour, for good reason. For good reason. This is where families and people live. All right?
One minute.
Everyone tonight here is in unanimous agreement that the Campana factory building is not best suited for residential housing. The factory is not where the people go to live. And I'm asking you, what was the research that you guys did? What numbers do you have? What number does Evergreen have? Do they have 125 counties? Have they looked at thousands of these projects? Have they looked in Illinois just like this, too? Have they done the math? Because you wanna know what? This is dollars and cents, and this is gonna be somebody injured, and it's gonna be somebody hurt. And I just hope to God it's nobody's kids in this room. All right? I already lost a house once. I moved to a better neighborhood thinking I was gonna make a good investment in my house. And now you guys are telling me that that's not the case. You know, I've lost one home when I was 20 to foreclosure. I know what hard times are like. My dad died when I was 20. You know, my mother is this woman, the people who live in there.
Ten seconds.
So just don't tell me that, you know, this is a good idea, because people who have done the work know it's not.
Next up is Patty Lackman, and then Jennifer Beal.
Good evening. I'm Patty Lackman, and I represent the League of Women Voters of Central Kane County. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that advocates for government issues and programs that confirm the League's commitment to diversity, pluralism, and inclusion. One of these issues is affordable housing. The League supports governmental and community efforts to ensure affordable, safe, and decent housing for the citizens of the communities of Central Kane County, which includes Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles. The proposal by Evergreen Real Estate Group for the Campana Building achieves this objective. By including affordable rental units in a percentage of the Campana redevelopment project, approval of this project will help the communities meet the critical housing needs of our low-wage-earning, working citizens. In addition, approval of this project will preserve a Kane County historical jewel. Out of the fear of the affordable housing component of the proposal, opponents are advocating for something better to be done for this property, to this property, but no one has proposed a workable use of this project, property for over 40 years. The League believes that the proposal presented by Evergreen is our community's last best chance to save a building worth saving while providing affordable housing to citizens who deserve the opportunity to live in communities in which they work. For these reasons, the League of Women Voters of Central Kane County supports Evergreen's proposed redevelopment of the Campana Building and encourages the city of Batavia to approve this proposal. Thank you.
Jennifer Beal.
I'm Jennifer Beal. I just did Jenna Dempsey. I don't think you did. I swapped my, it's my spot.
Okay, if you wanna come back up, then you can come up now.
Thank you. My name is Jenna Dempsey. I have a couple of questions and a statement. My first question is, will Batavia's crime-free housing ordinance, as it is currently written, apply to the Campana development? I guess I question this because I'm not sure, as it is written, if it was meant to cover multifamily housing in mixed-use zoning districts. And also to follow up from that question, will a rental license be required for the Campana development?
Yes, and yes.
Okay, thank you. The statement I have, well, starts with a question. Does Batavia have a developer impact fee that goes towards transportation improvements? I was reading over Evergreen's agreement with the city of Mundeline for their recent development up in Lake County. Page 10 of the agreement shows the city of Mundeline has a $2,795 traffic impact fee for every apartment unit that goes in. In the case of the development in Mundeline, Evergreen paid $111,800 total just in traffic impact fees. Sorry, I'm tired. I thought it would be great if Batavia did something similar, and that's all I have. I do have a copy of the agreement with the city of Mundeline. I only have one copy, unfortunately, because it's about 90 pages, so, sorry to give you more papers.
Okay, next is Jennifer Beal, and then after that would be Ernest Lamb.
I have two questions. One is about the certificate of appropriateness that Evergreen had to fill in and then have approved by the Historical Preservation Committee. Is that correct? Am I clear on that?
Yes.
That was one of your conditions? Okay. One of the conditions in the certificate of appropriateness, I think number nine, said that this Campana building, when renovated, has to have ceramic glass-fritted windows. And the sample that Evergreen bought or brought to the meeting was, showed a sandwich of, like a vinyl laminate between two glasses, an example of what the brick facade will look like. So I'm wondering if they'll be able to provide a sample of a ceramic glass-frit window before the project moves forward. And the second question I have actually just addresses this whole issue of fear that people are talking about. I mean, this is based on a comment that Evergreen made last month with regards to crime statistics at its Buena Vista property. They stated that it was four to five times bigger than Campana, a fundamentally different project to Campana, but there were 95 arrests made over 18 months. They predicted that would translate to about seven to 22 arrests at Campana over a similar time period. And I don't know what the crime rate is there currently, and I'm wondering if all developers come in with that kind of rhetoric, saying that you can expect a certain amount of crime. I don't think so. But I just wondered if maybe the police chief could comment on how many arrests have been at Campana recently, especially in light of the FBI's report that came out today that property
One minute.
...crimes for this area are actually down. So are we bringing more crime in by inviting the Evergreen Development to go forward? Thanks.
Next up is Ernest Lamb, and then Joshua Tate. Did you speak at the last meeting?
Nope.
City Council?
No. Good evening. My name is Josh Tate. I'm a resident of Geneva. My parents, or my mother, lives in Batavia, and my in-laws live in Batavia as well. I am a recent transport from the epicenter of bad government decision-making in this state and probably the country, so we probably all know generally where I'm from. I also have a public service background. I was an elected official where I came from, and I served five years as the president of my board, so I have experience with the situation that you are all in. And I'm here hopefully trying to lay upon you some of my experience, not necessarily experience, but my editorial on perhaps things to consider when doing your job. One of the reasons that my family is out here as opposed to where we are is because of the reputation for good decision-making in the general Kane County, Fox Valley area. And while the outcome of this is not determined yet, I am encouraged, at least, by the debate, the attention to detail that I have seen between the board members this evening. So if I were in your position, I would be looking at this thing right now and saying, what are the sum of the parts? What is the sum total of this thing? And how does that really dictate where my vote should end up? So, big thing that everybody has talked about and nobody has disputed is safety. That's off the table. Variances. I've heard several, you know, folks here talking about, we have standards, we have code, we have them for a reason. If we start deviating, if we start creating variances, what is the precedent that that sets on down the line? That has extreme merit, and you should follow that, because once you start dictating big variances like this, all of the other Evergreens out there looking to make big investment are gonna come in and are gonna try and do the same thing. And let's not kid ourselves here. We talked, everybody's talked about how this is the only chance for this building because no other private enterprise has come in, and Evergreen is the savior. Well, they're only kind of private enterprise, right? Everything's being subsidized, not everything, but most of this is being subsidized by taxpayers, you, me, and that's been brought up everywhere. And I know it's kind of a trend in government these last 10 years that government bails out bad decision-making in the business world, but that's not the job of government. The job of government is to have proper frameworks set up so commerce and markets can define themselves. If the gentleman and his partners who own the property happen to buy a lemon that doesn't have a whole lot of business redevelopment potential in the future
Ten seconds.
...it's not the job of this board or any other board to bail him out. So look at the sum total of the parts that you have in front of you and say, is this really a good decision? Thank you.
Next up would be Anita Hazel. Is she here? Okay, then next would be Scott Teggy. Not here either. Next would be Tom Simonean.
Tom what?
Oh, no. He's there.
Okay. Back.
Thank you, Tom Simonean. I live just down the street here at 921 South Batavia Ave in Geneva, but I own three properties in Batavia. And as a note, all those people that were not here and left, they said that I could have their minutes. I've been working on this for quite a while, and it's unfortunate that, you know, I put seven, eight hours' worth of work into this and I got three minutes, but I'm gonna try my best. Whatever I don't get done, I'm gonna get back on a list whenever. First of all, I commissioned a housing trends company to evaluate the potential property value impact of a redevelopment of the Campana factory to affordable family apartment units. And the objective of this assignment I gave them was to analyze similar affordable family rental communities in Chicago area suburbs with similar demographics to Batavia in order to evaluate whether the proximity to an affordable rental community had a negative or positive impact on property values and determine the potential impact and the distance from the rental community that the impact was realized. The study, they're working on it now, but they're gonna be, they're going to be comparing Batavia, Lake Zurich, Woodridge, North Aurora, and Naperville for sure, and they're gonna try and get a couple more in. I've got preliminary reports. They've completed one so far, a 70-unit affordable housing complex in Lake Zurich. It's built in 1975, and they analyzed housing sales for about 45 different homes, sold twice over a 15-year period. The results for homes between 0 and 1/2 mile from the development had a median annual appreciation of 0.6%. 6/10 of a mile to a mile, the median appreciation, annual appreciation was 2.1%.
One minute.
What that means is a $350,000 home within 1/2 mile of the development, after 10 years, is valued at $371,000. A $350,000 home, 6/10 of a mile to a mile away from the development, after 10 years is worth $421,000 for almost a $60,000 difference. I will have this study done, or they will have this study done, hopefully by the end of next week, and I'll provide you with all the other data as well. With regards to the sidewalks, I spoke with Mr. Apps today, the commissioner of the township, and he and he did not say no to sidewalks. What he said is he will not pay for sidewalks, but he will support the developer putting sidewalks in. And it was Mr. Strassman's email on April 25th that said, any development having to do with residents would require sidewalks, the city would require sidewalks all the way up Fabian and down Allen to Western Avenue.
This time.
And it's a condition of the city's school board. Thank you very much, and I got more. I'll hopefully get back in line. Thank you.
Next up is Alexander Romanoff.
Good evening. My name is Alexander, and I'm living 1811 Western Avenue. So I would like to comment on the slides presented by the developer. So as a physicist, I perceive the presented heat flow diagram as a cartoon and not as an illustration of a real study. And here is why. One thing that strikes me is that the presenter, I suspect that manipulated with key numbers and to make it look like a good insulated wall that is adjusted to the street, the glass wall, basically. So he put two marks about R19 insulation rating on the top and the bottom of the wall, but he didn't mention that the glass blocks are only R2 rating. And that's a game changer. If you have a half wall that covered with R19 and the half that covered with R2 rating, the average insulation rating is R3, not R10, which our intuition tells us. And I suspect that it was intentional attempt to confuse you guys that, once again, the whole wall will be R3. With that, I will double-check other numbers regarding only $30 per month for utility bills. That's really suspicious number to me, and that's actually not that hard to do. The second obvious manipulation that happened over the short presentation was about the soccer ball that won't get to the road, even though a moment before that, the presenter mentioned that the field is raised, and actually the ball will roll down by itself. So it's up to you how to read all the other information and studies that I'm not proficient in and I cannot judge, but that you probably can judge.
One minute.
And that was presented to you. Thank you.
Now, I've got, I think, one name here that's been here before, Guy Prisco.
Thank you very much. I'm Guy Prisco. I live at 700 West Fabian Parkway in Batavia at the Homestead. I'm here tonight to present some additional petitions from the Homestead, another 111 signatures from the Homestead, which brings it up to about 168, and it's ongoing. Just about all of our residents are very busy preparing for the, our annual bizarre, which happens this Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m., to which all of you are invited, as well as all the public. A little commercial. But on a serious side, I don't want to spend more time reading. I'll hand this out, just a copy for everybody. But just as a way of background, I am an architect. I had a business here in Batavia for 15-plus years, had an office where the bank is on Batavia Avenue, had an office of 10, 15 people, was involved in many projects up and down the valley. And as Mayor knows, I was the first, my firm was the first one to attempt to do a project where the Batavia Institute is now. It failed. It was a great project. The only thing wrong with it, it had some subsidies in it, and the people didn't want it, so we pulled it. The other thing is, as I sit here and listen to all this, you know, I suspect there's a elephant in the room of this project, as the saying goes. And that elephant is the human side of the project, which seems to be glossed over every time anything comes up. In fact, tonight is the best discussion I heard that even touches on it. But the reality is that this project, as it's designed and the limitations imposed on it by all the restrictions from historic preservation, as well as just the demands of the building
One minute, sir.
show that it is not feasible for human habitation. Now, we have a lot of good people here who have background, who have supported this project, just like two ladies tonight. I venture to say, not one of those people from these organizations that are supporting this have any idea what the actual condition of the living is in these, in this project. The windows, some rooms have no windows. You have the whole east side of the buildings have the windows. A lot of you people have touched on here tonight, they're problematic. You can't live in a place like that.
Ten seconds, sir.
That's it?
Ten seconds. Then you can finish. Okay. Public comments. The rest of that. People have spoken again, and I'd like Okay. I'll put you on here. If any of you have seen the letter? Written by somebody from Batavia named Ann Miller. I don't know who she is. She gives a poignant description of what it's like to think about having windows in your house and what it means, and what it would mean to live in this building, and exhorting you not to approve it. I have a question about process, which I'll take a couple seconds of my time, I realize that. Will there be other times to speak in the next meeting? Yes or no? I don't know if I can do that, because I don't know what Well, you said you weren't going to vote tonight. So there will be another meeting of this group? Correct. Next Tuesday? Right. And is there any reason that people in the audience who have a lot to say will be denied the right to speak? Well, it's not a public hearing, so we don't have to take testimony. We don't have to take testimony tonight because it's not a public hearing. We choose to listen. And we had three nights' listening. It's public comment. Right. Well, I'd like to submit to you that the information you received through the plan commission process is dreadfully inadequate. And it has been filtered through the staff of Batavia and the developer and a very, compared to this group, fairly passive group of people receiving the information at the plan commission. I'd like to suggest you rely on your own intelligence to dig into this a little further than the plan commission did so far. And I know you do not agree with your plan commission always, if not frequently, including the Shaudin project most recently. So I'd like to exhort you to take an independent look. One point that has really been bothering me tonight was mentioned briefly earlier, and I'm going to stick on that. And that is the idea that the traffic study done by the developer agrees, was agreed to and supported in basically the same study done by this KLOA group. That lie has been going on for the last three and a half months. It's been written up in your documents. It's an absolute lie. That firm, I just saw a copy of their letter today. They've written their initial study of several pages. They've had to write a second letter when your staff said that the first letter agreed with the developer's traffic study. Nothing was farther from the truth. For some reason, that second letter didn't even get published. It didn't even get given to the materials that anyone has received. Can you explain that? You could say it was an oversight, except there have already been so many oversights, I have to start to wonder whether they're not oversights. Okay. You should be wondering about that. Now, today, they wrote another letter. They had to write three goddamn letters to try to let you know that they have disagreed with the first study for three months. What the hell is going on here? Why is that even necessary? Something is not right. So there are a lot of things you don't know that I submit to you, you should want to hear in the next meeting. Thank you very much. Okay. It is five minutes to 11:00.
Another hour.
What?
No.
Just a three-minute break.
Do you want to make any comments as the developer before we end this meeting or end this discussion?
Only, I guess, to ask a question, what is the next step from here?
We're going to want to have a discussion, I guess, after this comment and decide, or these comments, decide what we want to do next. Do we want to take it right to council, or do we want to have another cowl meeting with it?
I'd say another
I would bring it to council.
What?
I would bring it to council, but we can
We'll be voting in favor or against the project if we brought it to council.
Yeah. At this point, I would, yeah, I wouldn't vote to send it to council with a positive recommendation, based on getting some of the information that we're still waiting for, counting on staff to do the follow-through on the KDOT and that kind of stuff that we're requesting. But as far as the variances and stuff, I think we were all pretty close to at least discussion with the full council.
I was going to say, if we're going to do that, then we need to have a motion to recommend to council if we're not going to go through another cowl on it.
I will make that motion.
We're missing five.
Yeah.
Two senior members of council who
Will they not be at the council meeting? I don't know how long he's gone for. He's a
I'm not sure. I have not seen anything from anybody about that. I know that he will not be here for the council meeting.
I just think it's premature.
There's, I mean, there's issues. We've got some that have never spoken on this yet.
Brown will be here, I don't believe, Tuesday, I think Monday night.
Monday night, yeah.
Good idea.
I would rather see us
I thought it was going to be better
One workout meeting.
Prefer a full
Get the answers, yes or no, on that, you know?
Yeah, I mean
That night, whether or not we recommend to council.
And there's just still outstanding answers the developer is going to go and get regarding what, doesn't know if the sidewalks are approved. I mean, if a sidewalk around the oval is a condition and he doesn't have approval, I mean, he thinks maybe he does, but if he doesn't have approval, well then, we're, what are we doing?
Well, then, I think we need to make sure that we've clearly communicated to developer what we want back and clearly communicated to our staff what answers we want back before we're ready to move this forward, up or down. So what answers, other than you want to know about the approval on the sidewalks?
There was sidewalks, the detention
The detention.
And there was the amenities, the definitions of other should be, as was brought up, should be clarified. I think it's just there's, it would end up going to city council as of right now. I don't know if it would be a positive recommendation. And if it goes to city council with a negative recommendation with things that we haven't thought through, going to city council trying to
Right.
make it up on the fly, that would be ridiculous.
I don't, with this many conditions and modifications to it, I do not want to do that at a council meeting.
I mean, this is a huge project. We're supposed to be weighing it with our full
We don't have the answers to make that.
And we have several people missing. I mean, yes, we're in quorum, but as big of a project as this is
We're very close on a lot of issues, though. I'm impressed by the conversation that we had tonight.
Yeah. But I think there are some issues that automatically this project's done if it's, I mean, it's pretty close on a couple of these, and I think, to be fair to the other aldermen, it would be worthwhile, necessary for another discussion on it.
I want to sit through one meeting with her, listen there.
I'm absent.
She's at home sick tonight, incidentally. She texted me.
To the developer's point about, you know, he wants an answer sooner than later, I know his, people want to move forward, and I understand that. Not only is this a big project, it's a unique project. It's got so many trap doors and, you know, we want to make sure we get it right, whichever, wherever we get, we want to make sure we get it right. And so, you know, even if Dave was here next Monday night, I don't think he could make an informed decision. And I value, I value his senior leadership, too. And I'm not pushing this off. I think it's important that those who are not here have had a chance to digest it, and we can push forward. Because this is, it's a big deal. This is an important decision, and I want to make sure that we get it right.
The other point is, there are so many conditions that have reliance of approval on other bodies. I don't know when they're going to rush and approve them or disapprove them. So why are we rushing when we don't know who's going to be approving and when they're even going to be approving? It's not like we're going to approve this on Monday and it's being built on Tuesday.
Are listed as conditions.
Right.
We've just given the developer a very big homework assignment so they can go out and see if these things we had issues with can be approved. Because then that helps us make our other decisions. That's some pretty good direction.
The way things are worded in there is that approval of the project is contingent upon those things. So I think the point being that in the event that approval is not able to be obtained, then that's an off-ramp.
Yeah, that was my belief, that we're approving these variances, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a for-sure go. You know, there's still a lot of steps that have to occur, but I do recognize it would be great to have a full council and the chairman of the Economic Development Committee part of it, so.
And I guess in comment from parties that have commented HUD, IDOT, et cetera, that that may bring new information to us that we haven't considered. And it just seems like, like I said, if they say, oh, yeah, don't, you know, right in, right out is it, well, that changes everything immensely. So we just don't know. I mean, it just seems like if everybody were to say, yeah, I'd be fine with it right in, right out, okay, but then it doesn't matter. I don't know.
I would like to point out that BATV has run out of recording space. Seriously, we've gone dark on BATV, so you may want to factor that into how long you prolong tonight's discussion.
You know, I can't remember dates that some of these aldermen have told me they're going to be gone, but I'm of the mind that I don't think next Monday night or next Tuesday, some of them are still going to be here.
I know that Drew McFadden will be here Monday, but he leaves on a business trip on Tuesday, but he's still planning to participate via phone. But I don't know if any other
Well, Brown's the one I'm wondering about, because he's not around.
And will we have answers back by Tuesday, next Tuesday, in one week?
I was going to suggest we roll this over two weeks, to the cowl, two weeks
To the tenth?
Yeah.
The date certain is the tenth.
The soonest would be, would be the third anyway, which means that the next following city council meeting is until the 16th, and the 10th is in between anyway.
That works.
We have some other, we have some other items of business the cowl needs to be addressing at a cowl meeting. You know, we've been diverting you away from some other stuff that needs to be handled.
Well, then, why don't we move this to the 10th?
Will that be enough time to get answers to some of the questions we had tonight?
Yeah, it should be.
All right.
So just to be, just to be clear, what I heard, the big questions are whether SHPO has approved sidewalks and detention in the front. KDOT and IDOT, you know, sort of find out if there's more information from those agencies, particularly on the right in, right out issue. Potentially address some of these further concerns about the KLOA study versus our parking study. What else, what else am I missing?
David, definition of the amenities in the event that amenities need to move and a soccer field is not feasible. meet with Shodin today for over two hours to talk about what their proposal might be to make the project feasible in light of the increasing cost and provided some very detailed information to us. We're meeting internally tomorrow about that. But we do expect to be able to put that on the agenda for next Tuesday to have the developer come in and give a presentation on what they're proposing and so that we can all discuss it together to determine whether that continues to be a feasible project. So that's expected to be on that October 3rd agenda, so that's good. And then Chris was going to give us an update on the branding project, just briefly, direction forward.
We will be sending out an invitation to each of you. We spoke with Spark and reviewed the fact that there was promises made in contractual form but also promises of good faith to give each of our councilmen an opportunity for input on the branding messaging. And to honor that approach, we want to arrange for opportunities that would give each one of you a chance to contribute your perspectives and input values into the branding messaging that we're planning to go forward with. In order to make that happen, we're going to be sending out an email to each one of you with an invitation first to establish a date that works with each of your schedules and obviously with everything on your plates, we want to respect that time. So we're going to endeavor to find the best opportunity for that. It's likely to involve mid-afternoon into early evening situation so that those who are local can participate at that point and those who commute can get back and have an opportunity. You'll have your opportunity in several forms of your own choice. One of them might be a survey that you could take that would be sort of standard operation of response. There will also be opportunities for personal interviews and input. Some of those might involve two people at a time if that's practical. You should both, everyone should have an opportunity to contribute that way and there may be one additional form of communication there. So we're trying to provide the optimal approach to gathering information and moving forward with this project to give the, both the, spark both the motivation and the insight they need to, you know, come up with something. After that, it'll come back, we'll be presenting those findings to the branding committee that's been in operation and at that juncture we would bring it forward for your review and approval. So obviously there are sort of components to this. There are brand architecture components that will be revised based on your input and then out of that will come, you know, the actual proposals in terms of tagline and branding and visual presentation. So any questions? In that case, we'll proceed and get that information out to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone have any others?
I do. I have something that I just want, I need some advice on from the rest of the councilmen and I'm glad Gary's here because I, he and I have been talking about something and I, so I have a constituent, their property backs up to electrical substation on Larkspur. So it has the new big wall around it. And before, before it was walled in, there was, there was a line of trees and they were planted probably 30 years ago, something like that. And the person that backs up to it had put a line of small pine trees in her backyard to help screen even a little bit more. Within the last couple of years, those pine trees, they got diseased, she had to take them down. She can't afford to put new ones in, she's single mom, so that's expensive. And in the meantime, one of those trees on the city property in a storm fell over and so there's, there's kind of an unabated view to the wall. She was, she's asking if the city can replace that tree and so I talked to Gary about it and he, and it, you know, in a legal sense, you know, he doesn't feel that we should, the tree should replace that for, and I think he talked to Scott and some other people, didn't feel that the city should have to replace that for the benefit of one person. And I asked him, well, what about the 50-50 parkway thing? He said, no, that is, does not benefit the general public. And so my responsibility I feel here is, first and foremost, I'm an advocate for my constituents and then as, then for the city. And I'm also supposed to make sure that, you know, our tax dollars are stewarded in a wise fashion. And if I'm, and I'm called to make wise decisions, not just follow the rule back necessarily. There's times you need to make judgment calls, right? And if we're not, if we're not supposed to do that and we're just going by a rule book, then we get an arbiter in here, they don't need us, right? So my question is, is there latitude for us to be able to do things like this for $150 or $200 tree for, you know, to, on a plot that was, that had a city tree? It's not a new thing, it's just, it's something to replace and, you know, and I have no animus towards Gary, this is just something that I think he would appreciate some clarity on. I would like some clarity on because I know we don't want to necessarily set precedent for, you know, people go, well, you bought this tree, you bought this tree. I think it's a little bit different in this case in that it is on city property and there's a tree that was down and, and, you know, I'm just, I'm just looking out for, I want to advocate for her because that's my job. And so I just wanted to get some feedback from you guys on what you thought. You know, it's not a sequoia, it's not, you know, we're not putting in a, you know, a new, brand-new sidewalk or anything like that. It's a stinking little Charlie Brown tree that we want to put in there.
We don't do Charlie Brown trees in Batavia. We go to the nurseries so that...
Okay, put a peppermint patty tree in. I don't care.
It's a tree on city property?
Yeah.
So wouldn't it only take two of us to direct staff to replant the tree?
Yes.
I'll be happy to join in that request.
I'll join too.
If I can, alderman, there's nothing preventing the homeowner from re-establishing her own screening of our substation that we paid $130,000 for to put up a decorative wall around. This is a tree that will only benefit her and not anyone else and that's why as a staff position, I took the position that we shouldn't be expending funds to benefit one homeowner without the direction of city council. So if city council wants to direct that, we will be out there to plant a tree but it's not something that staff should be taking in our own...
Would there be a scenario under which you would have to take the tree out again?
We didn't take the tree out. As alderman Savadi said, it came down in a storm.
If you had to get equipment out there and they put some additional trees out there, is it likely you'd have to tear the tree out?
No.
Well, on another note, just to give you some comparison, I got a communication today from a resident of the fourth ward who would like the city to make a major contribution to the bill of about $1,541 to pay for skunk removal because we've got a skunk problem in the east side cemetery and it's our skunks and they paid private money to pay for removal of these skunks. So, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of people out there that have a city wish this.
And I just would be concerned that the next person who objects to looking at something from the city wants us to put up a block or put a tree in front of it.
Well, I would just say to Scott's point, it wasn't originally planted to block it. It was for the city to plant a tree there. So it was benefiting the city because there was no reason to put it there for one person. We're only re-establishing what it was there to do. If it was originally planted on behalf of the city, we're just replanning it on the behalf of the city. It's not establishing precedence, not establishing anything else. We're replacing it one for one.
In the meantime, we installed a $100,000, $130,000 decorative wall to do the same purpose.
I was going to say, that was my question, was the tree line originally put in by the city to be the screening for the substation?
Yeah.
And then we stopped either maintaining or planting trees to do that and we started putting decorative walls around them, like the one on Key Street, like the one on South River. I mean, like, this is what we, this is a shift in what we've done. So we're not using the tree to screen the substation anymore. We're using the screening that we paid $130,000 for to do that. So why would we go back and replant the trees if the job they were there to do is no longer being served for that? So that's my problem with saying yes to have the tree replanted.
No, that's a great counterpoint.
We spent money to screen this.
But we're a city of trees, not a city of wall sections.
We got a, we got a utility pole in the sixth ward that we're going to have to have a conversation with you too.
My fear, my fear is here, okay? How many trees are out there, Gary? Six, seven, eight, 10? What's the tree line?
I don't know, it's a very old and mature tree line.
Right, but however many it is, if one falls down next year then, do we go in and plant that one again and when do we stop?
I've got a treehouse in the third ward.
I mean, I could wait a year and I'll find a maple tree behind another bush in my yard and I'll give them the maple tree and we can plant it there and in 20 years it'll be 35 feet tall. I mean, I guess I have a problem with saying yes to it because it's, the tree line is no longer serving the purpose that it was there for and we spent a lot of money to do it so we didn't have the maintenance of the trees or the fact that we'd have to replant them.
I'll throw another wrench in there. If the person could afford their own wedge, would we even be having this conversation? So do we make determinations based on what is deemed affordable or not affordable by an individual resident?
Would it be considered a compromise if we allowed her to plant a tree on city property or is she just one?
Well, my question, could we even do the 50-50? Could we do the parkway program? Is that, I mean, I think it, I think it applies but...
Parkway trees are for the public.
Parkwayes.
This isn't for the public. Their benefits are. I'll defer to staff on this one.
Yeah, I'd like us not to replace the tree. I mean, if we replace that one and another one falls down a year from now, we're going to be putting another one in, another one, another one.
But we always go from one extreme to another and not try to find solutions.
We have independent council here tonight.
But it always goes to the extreme, like tomorrow...
You got an opinion?
The entire city's going to be wiped out of trees and we're never going to replant them again and it's just, we're always on the fallacy of slippery slope, the next person, the next person, the next person. But the chances of it actually happening are so slim that there's got to be discretion and latitude on things that make sense. And that's why it goes back to, it was a city tree, then the original definition was a city tree, we can replace a city tree. It doesn't matter that she benefits or not. The city's benefiting because the city put it there to begin with. If we want to put the tree back to benefit the city, that's the only decision we ought to make.
I guess that's why I asked, what was it there for?
Do any of them benefit?
Well, no, we were talking about this tree. Does it benefit the city?
When we have city trees, are we replacing them? What's the standard that we use in any situation where we would replace a city tree?
I think Gary has said this tree previously had a purpose which no longer exists.
The mayor has often spoke of how we've tripled the tree population over the decades and that's a huge benefit for the community.
True. Unfortunately, we've got to take out thousands of ash and then...
So we better start replacing.
So we don't plant an ash.
We're moving backwards.
Go get some acorns.
I got an ash that's ready to go.
Bring your ash out of this.
No.
Do you have an opinion? I'm curious, I want to, we paid for independent council, let's get, let's...
Sidewalk?
Yeah, what, do you have an opinion?
It's a city policy, you've got to decide what's your policy.
I still like the notion of replacing a city tree.
I don't know the rest of these circumstances.
You do, I do like it. Replacing a city tree. I still would stand in that favor.
Take it out of my paycheck. Do it.
You might need both of ours, they're pretty small, so.
I'd be willing to do that. If it's, if that's, if that's what it's...
I'll second you, let's get the tree replanted.
My kids can eat next week.
Are we done with the discussion?
When you get your check, buy me a beer.
We got, we got direction from two aldermen. It's in a minute, replace the tree.
Okay. All right. Any other others?
Not tonight.
Did you like talking tonight? Would you like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.